I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Newport Beach City Council, November 29, 2016. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect all council members are present.
Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Selig and the invocation by Councilmember Curry.
Please follow me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in an attitude of prayer. Our Father in God, tonight we, your children in Newport Beach, come together to celebrate one of your greatest gifts to us, and that is the right to gather in democratic government. We ask that you would give us humility, that you would give us wisdom in these decisions, and that you would give us empathy and the ability to walk in the other guy's shoes, to see the issues that others may have different perspectives on. We thank you, Lord, for this great gift, for what it means to our country, for what it means to our freedom. We ask that you make us worthy of it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public: The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right, let me go through a few little housekeeping items. We have members of the public, as I just mentioned, watching in the community room next door, and members of the public, including those of you in the community room who wish to speak, you will want to come forward, and there'll be a line forming here, I'm sure, in the center aisle. So we will begin our public hearing on the Museum House Residential Project.
Public comments.
Oh, excuse me. I apologize. Public comments, non-agenda items, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Fred O'Mary, and I'm not here to speak about Councilman Keith Curry's resolution regarding the racist signs that were displayed during my campaign for District 7 City Council. I just want to read a statement by Judge Jim Gray addressed to the city council. It reads as follows. My name is James Gray, and I'm a retired judge of Orange County Superior Court. Today my words are not for my longtime friend Fred O'Mary. Instead, they are selfishly for all people who believe in fundamental fairness and goodwill. Recently, I've been made aware of some posted campaign signs that were ostensibly supporting Fred O'Mary in his recent race for city council seat. But I understand the signs were with his name in English and the rest in Far Sea, Persian. Not only is there nothing wrong with the Americans with Persian ancestry like Fred, but they have become some of our finest citizens. But these signs were not sponsored or posted by Fred's campaign, and the intense and unpleasant message which I believe the signs were expressly meant to convey was that just because Fred O'Mary's lineage is from Iran, Persia, he is not one of us. Do that I say? Absolute nonsense. Absolute nonsense. And to you, the city council of Newport Beach, I say, for the good of us all, for the good of us all, and for the freedom and justice that we all stand for, it's time for you to stand up, to stand up and condemn any and all people having not only violated our election laws by posting fraudulent campaign posters, but who have broken our laws of brotherhood and goodwill by implying that foreign-born Americans are anything less than loyal, righteous Americans. In my view, all of us are truly blessed by being citizens of this great country with an important duty of citizenship, which is within each of our values, various abilities, to make the system work, for good people to sit by and do nothing in a situation like this, and not to protest this fundamentally anti-American act is violation of our duties as citizens. What happened here is simply wrong.
Could you please wrap it up, Mr. O'Mary?
Yes, I will. And please join me in standing up and condemning it. Judge Jim Gray, retired Orange County Superior Court. I'd like to take only 15 seconds with four short questions that I have for you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. O'Mary, you really--
One, what exactly in the resolution do you object to?
Mr. O'Mary.
Why you took such extraordinary measure to stifle any discussion?
Mr. O'Mary.
Third, who are you protecting by blocking--
Mr. O'Mary, I think you're out of order. Please, please--
And what do you have to say to the large Persian community in Newport Beach?
Mr. O'Mary, please. You've--
That's it.
--well exceeded your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on non-agenda items? Thank you.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I have two comments on non-agenda items. The first is that I notice, as is often the case when there's a controversial item on the agenda, there's a fair amount of last-minute material in the lobby, and tonight I think a little short on copies of it, probably piled up on your desks as well. I don't know if you're aware of it, but when hearings are held before the Planning Commission, planning staff is extremely conscientious about promptly posting every item that they receive onto the meeting's online agenda page. Within minutes of receiving it, it is available online for everyone to see and digest so that there are no last-minute surprises when you come to the meeting. Your staff, namely the city clerk, although very good about many things, is not very good about that, and I see no reason that they couldn't be held to the same standard. I think it would be to everybody's benefit. Second non-agenda comment I want to make is related to that of the previous speaker, but on a more technical level, and it's related to the incident that happened at the meeting last week about agenda item Roman numeral six, which was a request from Councilmember Curry to have the city staff work up an item for consideration on a future agenda, an item on which a vote was taken without allowing Mr. Curry or anyone else, including the public, to speak. I was hoping I could stand before you tonight and say that muzzling Mr. Curry was an absolute violation of the Brown Act, but I cannot, for I found that Section 54954.2 gives city councils some latitude to develop their own rules for placing items on future agendas. However, there are still two things I'd like to say about this. First, the clearly stated purpose of your rule is to give the whole council a chance to discuss whether the item is of enough interest to ask the staff to prepare a report for a detailed discussion at a later meeting. So the item, this item, was clearly on the agenda for discussion. Second, if the vote is taken without discussion, the implication is that you, the mayor, expect Councilman Curry to lobby his fellow council members off-camera to scare up the required number of votes to pass his motion. I don't think that's an impression that you want to create, because that would clearly require a violation of the Brown Act on the part of Councilman Curry. And again, this item was very definitely on the agenda last week, and whether the council members are allowed to speak on it or not, denying the public the right to speak on any agenda item is absolutely a violation of a state law. If you don't believe that, I would suggest you refresh your memory of Government Code Section 54954.3. Somewhere on the agenda, there has to be an opportunity for the public to speak on any item of interest before your action on it. I have no interest in serving you with a notice of violation, but the Brown Act does not recognize items on which no public comment is allowed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on non-agenda items? Any public comments? Anyone from the community room? No? All right, we shall proceed. We'll begin our public hearing on the Museum House Residential Project, 850 San Clemente Drive, and staff. Ms. Brandt?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. Members of the council, I'm Kim Brandt, Community Development Director, and with me I have Senior Planner Greg Ramirez. And between the two of us, we'll provide the staff presentation on the Museum House project. We also have an applicant presentation that will, which will occur after our presentation, then at that point we'll be happy to answer questions of the city council, or you can move into public comments. That will, of course, be your decision. But at this point, I do want to just turn the mic over to Greg Ramirez, so he can give an overview of the project.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and members of the city council. Greg Ramirez with the Planning Division. So as Kim mentioned, the general outline tonight is we'll have a presentation followed by the applicants, and of course, we'll be available for any comments along the way or after. And of course, the public hearing will occur. So of course, tonight we're discussing the proposed Museum House project, and to remind everyone where we're talking about, we're talking about 850 San Clemente Drive. So there's the subject property there. It's approximately two acres. And then also, a point in tonight's meeting is 856 San Clemente Drive, which is currently occupied by the museum's administration building, and that site is approximately one acre. So the project overview, as I mentioned, it's a two-acre site. It's currently home to the Orange County Museum of Art. It's approximately 24,000 square feet and would need to be demolished if this project was approved and went forward. The proposed improvements in the project is the condominium tower, which is 104 cell units with approximately 392,000 square feet, not including the two parking levels. It's approximately 20, it is 25 stories high, 295 feet. 250 parking spaces are proposed. These are striped spaces, and the use of a 24-hour valet service would add an additional 38 spaces and possibly more. The project includes many shared open spaces and amenities for the residents, including pool, gardens, fitness centers, the small dog run, and some private open balconies and decks for some units. And the applicant is intending to pursue LEED Silver-certified standing, and that includes water-conserving fixtures, related landscape irrigation, plumbing fixtures, and LEED Silver also includes many other items, including construction materials used, how portions of the demolished buildings are disposed of, and things of that nature. So what entitlements do they need for their project to go forward? So of course, the first is the General Plan Amendment to change the property site's designation from private institutional to multi-unit residential to allow the 100 units. They would also need the Plan Community Development Plan Amendment, and this is essentially the zoning for the site. So that Plan Community Plan Amendment is included in your packet within the proposed ordinance, and that would include a whole host of residential development standards, including the 295-foot height limit. They would need approval of a tentative tract map, and that's to allow the units to be individually sold as condominiums. So it's essentially a condominium map. Approval of site development review, as prescribed by the zoning code, and then a traffic study pursuant to the traffic phasing ordinance and the requested development agreement. And then, of course, tying all this together is the certification of the environmental impact report, and I'll get to the EIR a little bit later in the presentation. So again, here's a vicinity map. It's an air photo showing, well, showing the latest shot of what we had. So I think the villas at Fashion Island there to the north are much more further along, and so this there would be what the project would look like as far as a building footprint. You can see the tower footprint is essentially the yellow area there, and it shows the landscaped areas and the motor court. So a little zoom in here on the project site. Site access would be off San Clemente Drive, so there'd be one, there'd be a driveway in, and there'd be a 24-hour guardhouse, and it'd be gated. There'd also be 24-hour valet. The access to the underground parking areas is there where that arrow is. Exiting out of the site would be there. And then this driveway over here, this is essentially a ramp down to the first level of the parking area. And what that takes the driver or the person to is a loading area. It provides access for the fire department when they don't want to use the top courtyard. They have a fire control room down there. It'd be used for trash collection, deliveries, and things of that nature. So it's kind of like a service drive. So the main, so the service vehicles will essentially be separated from the residents and the visitors. This here shows a architectural elevation. As you can see, you might be able to notice on the key plan below, this would be a view looking at it from that motor court area, and it shows some of the finished materials in the building. And I know the applicant and their presentation will elaborate more on the architectural design and the finished materials and things of that nature. So first, we want to talk about the General Plan and the Plan Community Amendments. These are the legislative amendments, and these are what have to be approved for all the others to go forward. So currently, the General Plan designation, as I mentioned, is private institutional, and the request is for the 100 dwelling units. We picked this goal because this goal is specific to Newport Center, and it's one of the overarching goals for Newport Center, and I'll go ahead and read it. A successful is what the General Plan envisions for the Newport Center area. A successful mixed-use district that integrates economic and commercial centers, serving the needs of Newport Beach residents and the subregion, with expanded opportunities for residents to live close to jobs, commerce, entertainment, and recreation, and is supported by a pedestrian-friendly environment. So that's one important goal to keep in mind when reviewing this project. So a little closer, this is what the, excuse me, this is what the General Plan land use map would be actually changed to. So right now, both sites are included in what we call Anomaly 49, and that's because it has a specific site development limit of 45,208 square feet. So Anomaly 49 would be reduced to only cover the 856 San Clemente Building, which is the current museum administration building, and the development limit would be reduced to 21,576 square feet. The current administration building is a little under 14,000 square feet, so as you can see, there'd be almost 8,000 or so square feet of available floor area to that site. And then next door, the subject site, of course, would be re-designated multiple-unit residential and allow 100 dwelling units. So this is another air photo that shows some of the surrounding land uses. Shows the villas to the north, to the south across San Clemente. There are the Colony Apartments. There's a Pacific Life Building. Directly adjacent to the east is a parking office, parking structure. To the west is, again, the admin building and another parking structure. So as if you look around, you can see how the area has been developed as a mixed-use area here in this northern part of Newport Center. Here's another exhibit that shows where the other existing residential areas are within Newport Center, and as you can see, they're kind of on this westerly side here. Did we say there was 1,270, 1,275 existing units within this Newport Center statistical area, and there are still five that could be built down at the tennis club, and then, of course, the 100 units proposed for this site? This map show, this map is a snapshot out of the San Joaquin Plaza Plan Community, which, again, is the zoning for the site. So of course, if this was amended, we'd have the maps in that Plan Community would be amended to correspond and be consistent with the General Plan as far as what types of uses are allowed. So moving along to building height and scale, of course, this is one of the major issues here of this project. Here's another policy that, excuse me, is specific to Newport Center, and it's reinforced the original design concept for Newport Center by concentrating the greatest building mass and height in the northeasterly section along San Joaquin Hills Road, where the natural topography is highest and progressively scaling down building mass and height to follow the lower elevations toward the southeasterly edge along Coast Highway. So essentially, keep the tall buildings in the bulk in the north, northeasterly, and scale down as you get towards Coast Highway. So this table here kind of shows some of the existing buildings that have been constructed and consistent with that policy. As you can see, most of them occur in Block 600. These are the taller buildings within North Newport Center, and then this next exhibit shows where those are essentially at. So the 520 building, I'm sorry it's not on the exhibit, but it would be kind of over here on the corner of San Joaquin and MacArthur. These build, here's the Island Hotel for reference, and then these are the other buildings that are over that 250 to 300-foot range. Museum House proposed to be over here off San Clemente Drive. But here's another, or the same exhibit as you've seen. This one shows some of the existing building heights surrounding the area. And as you can see, the villas at Fashion Island are about 65 feet, and the other buildings are shorter there, excuse me, as indicated on the exhibit. So another thing that we looked at and the Planning Commission looked at was Map H1, which is right out of the zoning code, and it's called the high-rise height limit area. So what this shows is areas in the city that, if they have straight zoning, so for example, if they are zoned office-regional, for example, and they're not in a Plan Community, they have a 300-foot height limit. If they aren't in a Plan, if they aren't in a Plan Community, then it's areas that show the potential to have buildings that are up to 300 feet. Now, one thing to point out here is that the high-rise height limit area, the zoning codes indicates that it's for non-residential buildings only, for commercial buildings. So this is a zoom in to show that this site and the site at 856 are in, within that height limit. So although they're not, although it's a residential building, we thought that this was very interesting, because a building can be looked at as being a building, and whether or not the bulk and scale of the building is appropriate and maybe not necessarily the use. So that's, there's a couple different ways to look at that, but that's one way to consider whether or not the proposal is consistent with what the intent of the zoning code is. Okay, so I'm going to move on to, related to the General Plan Amendment, is Charter Section 423, and whether or not this would require a vote pursuant to Section 423. So the table here, if you look at the line that indicates totals, so when added to previous General Plan Amendments, you can see that none of the thresholds, the 40,000-square-foot non-residential floor area threshold, the 100 AM or PM peak hour trip thresholds, or the increase in dwelling units exceed the Section 423 thresholds, and therefore, a vote would not be required. So I'm going to move along and discuss a little bit about the environmental impact report now. So the first step was a public scoping meeting that was held back in February, and we had a meeting over here in the community room, and a lot of folks came out, and at that meeting then after submitted items and issues that they wanted addressed in the EIR. And so they were included in the EIR, and the draft EIR was prepared and circulated for public comment in August that ended on September 30, 2016. The EIR included multiple technical studies, as are often found in environmental impact reports. The EIR also included several alternatives. There was a reduced height alternative, which was considered. That alternative was ultimately rejected because of impacts onto the adjoining apartments that are under construction related to shade and shadow. The size and the bulk of the building cast shadows for a longer period of time than the narrower tower. There, of course, was the no-project alternative, the existing General Plan alternative, and then there was a reduced density alternative. Now, the reduced density alternative, essentially there were no new or lessened impacts with that reduced intensity alternative. All the impacts came out to be essentially the same as the proposed project. The EIR concluded that there will not be, the project would not result in specific or cumulative impacts to existing traffic, public views, delivery of water, other utilities. It concluded that it was consistent with the goals and policies of the General Plan, including those specific to Newport Center. Mitigation measures are required for short-term impacts related for construction, and that's those addressed noise, air quality, cultural resource, geology, and soils, transportation, and traffic. There was one significant unavoidable impact identified, and that was construction noise, and that was essentially due to the apartments that are under construction at the villas, and then also to the Colony Apartments that are across the street. So the, there was no way to mitigate the significant impact. There are, however, almost any mitigation measure that can be used to lessen the noise impact have been included in the EIR and in the mitigation monitoring program to get that down to the least impact possible. And finally, based on the comments, received responses to comments were prepared, and there were a few other revisions to the EIR, cleaning up a few figures. However, it was determined that none of those items warranted recirculation. And then another update to the EIR was the development agreement, which, again, I'll get to in a moment. And that would include the nine-acre, or the approximately one-acre parcel at 856 San Clemente to be deeded to the city. But since that project includes no physical changes, it doesn't change the land uses that are allowed on that site, it was determined that the EIR was sufficient. So one other thing that the EIR did, and everyone's always interested in, is the traffic. So the traffic engineer was hired under the supervision of the city's traffic engineer to go out and actually do physical counts of the museum to see what it was actually generating, and it was determined that it creates about 108 average daily trips. The proposed Museum House condos would generate approximately 418 average daily trips, so an increase of a little over 300 ADT. So the development agreement as proposed and included in your packet, it's a 10-year term proposed with a one-year, with one five-year extension, public benefit fee of $71,100 per unit, and then again, the donation of the property at 856 San Clemente Drive, with the five-year leaseback to the museum at $1 per year.
Mayor Dixon, I'll just make a comment about the Airport Land Use Commission. Because the project does require a General Plan Amendment as well as a zoning amendment, it is required to be reviewed by the Airport Land Use Commission, because the project site is located in the area of influence for the Airport Land Use Commission, and it's, there's an overarching document that's similar to our General Plan, which governs the airport, and that's the Airport Environs Land Use Plan. So the Airport Land Use Commission is required to review the General Plan Amendment and the zoning change for consistency with the Airport Environs Land Use Plan, or ALUPE, a little easier to say. And they held that hearing on November 17, and did find the project consistent with the ALUPE, with a-- the A-Loop with the condition that there be clarification that the Federal Aviation Administration study that looked at whether or not the proposed building itself would create a hazard to aviation, and they made a determination of no hazard, but there wanted to be information or documentation to the fact that they did consider helicopter, air traffic, and specifically the helipad at the city police department's facility. So that information was provided to you in the information that was distributed to you from the Airport Land Use Commission staff. The executive officer did review the information and had conversations with staff from the FAA, and did believe that with that information, as well as information provided to them from the chief of police regarding how our helipad operates, that the intent of the condition has been made, has been met, and that indeed the FAA study did consider the helicopter operations in the vicinity of the project site. So with that, there is a determination that this project is consistent with the Airport Environs Land Use Plan, and that allows the city council to move forward with the general plan amendment and zone change if that would be your desire.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple more slides here. So one of them, important one, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 20th, and they deliberated, and they ultimately concluded that they would recommend approval of the project as proposed to the city council. And then I just want to add up, I know you've been getting a lot of correspondence and emails and memos and things about public comments and public input, and we kind of tallied it up the best we can here, and this is based on what we've received since the Planning Commission. So opposed to the project, we've had, it looks like, 12 letters, 229 individual phone calls, and then, of course, there's a couple petitions in there, the one from SPON, and then the one from the high-rise opponents. And then in favor, we've had, our count is 29 letters in support and three phone calls, and then, of course, the petition that was submitted by the applicant with their letter and included in your packet. And that concludes our presentation for now. We're, of course, available for any questions, and I know the applicant also has a presentation as well.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you and your consideration. Before I start, just a little bit of history. My parents moved to Newport Beach in 1977 from the East Coast, and for years, my father had an office at 180 Newport Center Drive, right over here. He passed away 19 years ago, and he was a big supporter of the library. So after that, my brother and I and our families created and have since sponsored the Speaker Series at the public library. My partner, Gino Canori, lives in Newport Beach. I lived in Corona del Mar when I moved here in 1990. Now I live in Laguna Beach. I raise all of this only because, contrary to what some would apparently have you believe, we didn't parachute in from out of town and show up with the plan for Museum House. We've been here a while, we've watched the community grow, we're not unmindful of many of the issues that you face and that are going to be discussed tonight. So two and a half years ago, when the museum made the decision to sell their site, and they selected us, instead of just plunging ahead, we took the first year and we spent time trying to figure out, you know, what would work here, what would make sense? And again, we weren't unmindful of the many issues. So the museum made clear to us that although they would be leaving, there was a legacy here for them, and if something was going to replace the museum, it had to be first-rate. It had to be something that would pass that test. We retained, who I'll introduce you to in a second, our architect, Robert Stern, and his partner, Dan Lobitz, who we think are world-class architects, and maybe the premier luxury residential multifamily architect in the country, to help realize that vision. The second thing we did is say, look, there's a trade-off between height and open space. And we got, you know, my stepmother lives in the townhomes in Big Canyon. She's always complaining about projects that, like, create a wall on the street. So we said, you know, to repeat that is probably a mistake. To realize that fine design and to also create a better urban design, the pedestrian should have more open space, not just a wall. And at a lower-scale building, no matter how much you design it, that's likely what's going to happen. Lastly, we thought height immediately in people's minds, that people think is going to block my views. My views are going to be blocked. So we were able to site a building, some of it is just the accident of the location of the site, so that it literally blocks no ocean views from ocean-view corridors anywhere in the city. And in many parts of the city, you can't even see it because it's hidden behind the arc of high-rises already present there. We happened to embrace the concept that Greg spoke about, about more residential, closer to jobs and shopping, which this would provide. So from a land-use point of view, the site is located in that portion of Fashion Island that has a lot of residential, which also seems to make sense. So, you know, this slide just relates basic elements of our vision, develop in a responsible manner, highest level of design, extend the luxury brand of Fashion Island, complement the existing skyline, limit view and shadow impacts, and maximize outdoor open space and amenities. Then, we spoke, we've probably had 90 meetings with various stakeholders and individuals and others. Some were opponents and became supporters, some were opponents and remained opponents. Many were supporters, and we were actually encouraged specifically for something like this. It's not that easy to generate support for a development project. We then, the city conducted, as Greg indicated, an environmental impact report, and I won't repeat the conclusions, he said. The city hired the consultant. But a couple of things I would highlight. It doesn't obstruct any ocean views along view corridors, as I indicated. But on traffic, not only was it a very minimal traffic impact, but the EIR required that we assume that all 100 units are occupied all the time. Well, first of all, we know from the Meridian right down the street and other developments we've done, that the buyer is generally an older demographic, so less traffic in general. Secondly, in this case, we expect that they won't be there all the time. However, that's what was studied. So people can question the results of the EIR, but we didn't conduct the EIR, the city and an independent consultant did. This traffic impact, as identified in the EIR, is less than one-third the impact of traffic of one Starbucks, of an average Starbucks. It's a taller building with a much, much lower traffic impact, and less than one-tenth traffic impact of the PIMCO building. Now, building height, I think Greg covered this. The building does not stand out among the other existing high-rises. It's shorter than 520, 650, and 610 Newport Center Drive, and because it sits topographically at a lower point, it reads lower, even though the building is, you know, the height that it is. This slide just depicts that. More detail on the traffic impact, I think I pretty much covered it. The fact that it is also closer to shopping and jobs, whether people work there or not, it is certainly likely to encourage a more walkable community, as the other residential components of Fashion Island already do. Another sensitive issue is water. The EIR concluded that the city's water system has sufficient capacity. And an important fact, which I think the city can respond to if asked, that the water management plan of the city accounts for population growth. It assumes population growth, and that, so there will be no impact on the existing water conservation measures if this building is built and occupied. It is also worth noting that condominiums use a lot less water per capita than single-family homes, because they're included in a multifamily building, they don't have individual yards. Current-day new construction uses significantly less water. This is built to lead silver and other water conservation standards and energy-saving standards as well. I mentioned that we've had over 90 meetings and will continue to. Those include four to five meetings with SPON and their representatives, which have been cordial. I mean, we don't agree, but we've met and would continue to meet. We have the support of the Newport Beach Police Officers and Firefighters Association, of the Canyon Crest Community Homeowners Association in Big Canyon, and we point that one out because it's at the highest point. It is most impacted by this building in terms of seeing it. It's not blocking an ocean view, but it's the one HOA in Big Canyon that would see this building the most. And then, of course, we have a petition with over 300 supporters. Finally, public benefits. I think from the outset, we understood, and the museum understood, that quite apart from the project itself, a question would be asked, is what is the city getting? What is the city getting in addition to a nice building? This slide attempts to outline that very specifically. 5.7 million in permit and impact fees, as Greg indicated, a $7.1 million community benefit contribution, and OCMA's willingness to donate to the city a .9-acre site valued at almost $9 million for continued cultural and arts usage. Over 30 years, $18 million in cumulative taxes and fees. So considerable, maybe a record-setting amount for one project of community benefits. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our architect. We're very pleased to have Robert Stern personally with us tonight and his partner, Dan Lobitz. I mean, their record speaks for themselves, so I won't go into that, but they'll present the design to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Unfortunately, between the plane ride-out from New York and your balmy weather today, I've lost most of my voice. I'll try to do my best. And thank you, Mayor Dixon, and the council members, for the opportunity to speak to you today and share with you some of our architectural work and the philosophy that lies behind it. Over the years, my practice and that of my partners has been guided by a belief in the continuity of tradition and governed by a desire to create order out of the often chaotic situations we find ourselves in, by entering into a dialogue with the past and with the spirit of the places which we build new. This philosophy has guided our work here in Newport Beach. That one. Oops. Wrong. Wrong. Something's gone wrong, Dan. We work all over the world, many architects do today, and wherever we work, we strive to connect to local traditions while accommodating the requirements of modern living. Our practice began almost 50 years ago with the design of custom houses for private clients, and the design of houses remains a very important part of our work to this day. Been fortunate enough to be called on to design a variety of houses in California, and especially Southern California, which is familiar territory to me. With each house, we have worked to capture the spirit of the place and to take advantage of the climate. And as architects, we especially respect, I would even say envy, and certainly love your Southern California indoor/outdoor way of living, but not today. It's a bit cold, from my view. For the past 20 years, we've taken the lessons learned while designing private houses and applied them to the design of multifamily residential buildings. We've had the opportunity to design these around the country and around the world. Working with the enlightened developer clients and with high aspirations, we have created buildings that are widely admired for their quality and the way they fit into their surroundings. In Los Angeles, I'm told you're never allowed to talk about Los Angeles when you're in Irvine, but I'm daring to do that. In Los Angeles, our Century condominiums were designed for the related companies. Our client on this project, Museum House, situated amidst the office buildings and hotels of Century City, a setting that has many similarities to the museum site here in Newport Center. Museum House of the Century provides a broad spectrum of residents as well who coalesce as a community, sharing gardens and recreation amenities, but who also wish to live and enjoy sitting living. If we can achieve that balance, we feel we've done a very good job. Like the Century, Museum House is embedded in the city and is also a refuge from it. Museum House will deliver the same level of quality and detail as at the Century, and like it, it will embrace the California way of living with its own garden and generous private outdoor spaces for each resident, all within a short walk from shops, dining, and cultural activities. The existing Newport Center skyline, as it stands, already is made up of taller buildings grouped around Fashion Island. But they are principally office buildings, as we've heard and as you well know. We believe that a sophisticated residential tower will enhance neighborhood quality and complement the skyline and make for a much livelier place for everyone. It's our expectation that Museum House will take its place among the taller office buildings and, dare I say, surpass them in architectural quality. I promise you it will. We're very excited to work with the related corporation, with whom we've worked many, many times in many, many different cities. And what we believe this project will be, along with MBE Architects and the city officials, we will be able to realize an important next step in the evolution of Newport Center. Newport Center is evolving. All lively, all healthy places evolve, and we are confident that Museum House will be part and parcel of a beautiful future and a fitting addition to the Newport Beach community. I'd like to turn the podium over to my partner, Dan Lobitz, who will take you through the design and details of the Newport House, Museum House, in detail.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you to Mayor Dixon and members of the council for allowing me to show you our scheme tonight. Our proposed building is 295 feet tall with 100 residences, a combination of two- and three-bedroom condominiums. We have 250 parking spaces on two levels below grade and 100 bicycle spaces. Here's an aerial view of the site shown in yellow. The original master plan for Newport Center by William Pereira and Welton Beckett from the 1960s envisioned taller buildings clustered to the north and east of Fashion Island, and you can see here how our proposed building extends the crescent of tall buildings further to the west. Our site is the current location of the Orange County Museum of Art, where Santa Maria Drive terminates at San Clemente Drive. And here you can see a site plan of our proposed scheme. The Butterfly Plan Building cradles the northern and eastern edge of a motor court, opening the building out to views to the south and west across San Clemente Drive toward the Pacific Ocean. Residents and guests approaching the site drive along San Clemente Drive or along Santa Maria and enter through a landscaped oasis into a welcoming motor court. Maria and enter through a landscaped oasis into a welcoming motor court. This is our site plan in more detail. The building is situated in a beautiful setting designed by celebrated landscape architect Pamela Burton with expansive gardens, mature trees, and drought-tolerant plantings. These gardens feature a landscaped entry court with a central water feature diminutively scaled. The private areas feature a second-floor pool deck, fountain and sculpture plaza, hovered trellis and seating area, garden path, a garden dining terrace on a second level looking out to the south. And the frontage along San Clemente Drive is surrounded by a drought-tolerant landscape buffer of native California plants. This is a view of our entry court, and this is a view of the gardens and sitting areas on the opposite side of our building. This is the ground floor plan. The main entry is at the center of the building, and entrances to parking are located at the edges of the motor court. The lobby enters directly into a residence lounge, which further opens toward a garden lobby that gives residents access to private gardens to the north. We also have a club room, library, a dining room, conservatory, and dog spa. On the second floor, we have additional amenities, including a residence lounge, a children's playroom, a media screening room, a business center with conference rooms and home offices, a garden terrace and lounge, bar and wellness, a state-of-the-art fitness center that opens out to a beautiful pool deck with an Olympic-length pool. This is a typical mid-level floor with five condominium units, two and three-bedroom apartments, two and three-bedroom residences, each with a large, furnishable outdoor space and planned with a series of discreet rooms that open into each other to allow for that casual California lifestyle. This is a cross-section of our building, and the typical residences each have ten-foot clear ceilings with even higher ceilings at the penthouse levels at the top of the building and at the amenity and lobby spaces as well. Generously scaled windows with low sills open the building to views in all directions. This is a view from the fourteenth floor looking west toward Newport Bay, and this is a view to the southwest looking out toward the ocean. This is the southwest elevation of our building. The tower's detailing, a rusticated stone base, masonry frames and pilasters with delicate metalwork details relates to the residential architectural traditions of Southern California. Larger-scale elements such as multi-story bay windows with French balconies and inset terraces provide articulation to the massing and contribute to the residential aesthetic. This is the northeast elevation, which looks across our private gardens and off to the hills beyond. And this is the south elevation, which faces San Clemente Drive. The top of the building is sculpted to provide setback roof terraces for the upper-level apartments and create a beautiful silhouette on the skyline. In terms of materials, we propose a combination of limestone and cast stone with a granite water table and bronze and painted metal detailing for window mullions, entry canopy, bay windows, and railings. We envision high-quality details throughout, including a sculpted limestone base, beautifully detailed precast concrete, inset balconies, and custom ornamental metalwork. This diagram shows the height of our building in comparison to nearby Newport Center neighbors. You can see that our building ties in with their scale, but actually breaks down the massing further with setbacks and mid-scale residential details to achieve a beautiful silhouette that will make a significant contribution to the neighborhood. As Bob mentioned earlier, our building will join the existing Island Hotel and Office Buildings to create a true mix of uses on the skyline. So finally, again, this is the view of our building looking east, and this is an overall view of Newport Center. We feel our building would be a fitting and beautiful addition to the neighborhood, extending the crescent of taller buildings further to the west and creating a beautiful silhouette on the skyline. Thank you. I'll now turn the podium back to Bill Witty for closing remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would also add one other point about the building configuration, is it'll be fully valet parked. You won't be required to use the valet, but regardless, visitor or resident, you'll have valet parking available, so there can never be a parking problem, because there will always be a way to accommodate cars. I also forgot to mention earlier that in addition to our history in Newport, ten years ago, at the behest of the Irvine Company, we developed the Affordable Senior Housing Bayview Landing Project next to the Hyatt Newporter, which we still own, so we don't only do high-rise development. In fact, we're the largest developer of affordable housing in Orange County, which may seem counterintuitive, but is in fact the case. That completes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Witty, and Mr. Stern and Mr. Lobitz. Thank you very much. Let me bring it up to the council. Any comments? Any speaking requests? No? Should I? We'll bring it out to the public. So let me go through our housekeeping procedures. Because of the, well, first of all, would you raise your hand if you intend to speak? Would like to speak? And I'm sure that there are people over in the other room. Because of the large number of speakers, we will be, this evening, limiting the public comments to two minutes per person. The buzzer will sound at two minutes. Please, please, please. The buzzer will sound at two minutes, so please watch the time monitor on the lectern and complete your comments in two minutes or less. And I will have to gavel to the end of, at the end, when the buzzer goes off. I will not intend to be, I do not intend to be disrespectful, but we do have a lot of speakers we need to get through to this evening. And for those of you who wish to speak, please line up in front of each lectern, coming down the center aisle and feeding off to the lecterns, so we go one after the other. And of course, as you know, please state your name. Also, another housekeeping item, please respect our rules of engagement. No clapping, shouting, or otherwise commenting or speaking if not recognized to speak. If you would like to indicate your support for a comment, please do not clap, but as the California Coastal Commission does, raise your hands like this without making a sound, and that will keep the meeting progressing in an orderly fashion. So let's begin with our public comments, and please state your name and proceed.
I'll be brief. It looks like you have a long show ahead. So my name is Casey Teramina. I'm a Newport Beach resident. I also am a broker with Sir Terra Properties. So I come speaking to you tonight in support of the project from two different perspectives. Living in Big Canyon, I've been very impressed by Related's sensitivity to views, traffic, and really incorporating the community's feedback into their plan and making modifications that were sensitive to a lot of people's concerns. As a professional, I understand that this project provides product that is in great need. Some people say that this would be catered to an older demographic in the real estate community. We like to maybe term, use the term "empty nesters." And this product provides a solution for a lot of our clients who live in larger homes, maybe in Pelican Hill, Crystal Cove, throughout Crown Almar, and their kids are moved out. They're looking to downsize. This might be a second or third home, so the amenities that they've thoughtfully included in their plan really serve a lot of the needs that our clients are looking for. I could have sold three times the amount of units that Meridian provided. So the project is beautiful. We really are honored. I'm honored to have the opportunity to have a building designed by this team in our city, and I believe that it really uplifts the community, and I would be honored to have that here in our city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
My name is Larry Tucker, and I've lived in the Canyon Crest section of Big Canyon for twenty-four years. I served on the planning commission for eleven of those years. I will see the Museum House from my home and drive on San Joaquin Hills Road daily. This project was unanimously approved by the planning commission, the same planning commission that recently rejected a project at the car wash site in Newport Center, a Porsche dealership in Mariners Mile, and a large apartment project by the airport. So they are obviously not a rubber stamp for development. In order to understand the commission's unanimous approval, it's important to understand what they do. First, they analyze projects for impacts. Developers claim sometimes there are no impacts. Opponents usually claim there are significant impacts. When an EIR is required, the preparer of the EIR acts as an independent third party who evaluates the facts and determines whether or not impacts will occur. In the case of Museum House, the independent analysis determined that there will be no impacts, no post-construction impacts, no traffic impacts, no view impacts, no water impacts, no safety impacts, and no land-use compatibility impacts. Next, the commission will ascertain if a project will fit on a site with pleasing, safe, functional design, as well as fit in the neighborhood in which it is to be located. With both the car wash site and the Porsche dealership, the commission decided those projects would not properly fit on the site. They decided the apartments at the airport were not well-designed, but the Museum House received high praise from all commissioners. It is a world-class design by a world-class developer befitting Newport Beach. The opponents of the project at this point are reduced to making subjective opinions and claims with no facts that are required by CEQA. They claim it's too tall, but it's the seventh such building in the area. They claim it's dangerous, but fire and police don't agree with that. They claim that it'll violate the height restrictions, but the Airport Land Use Commission, as you just saw earlier, said, "No, it won't." Newport Center will become Los Angeles. It can't under green light. It will cause horrific traffic, but by my calculations, the added traffic will average only about one car trip every two minutes from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And my personal favorite is it might sink. I can't rebut that one.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Lynn Swain, and I'm a resident in Canyon Mesa at Big Canyon, and we are strongly opposed to this project. I don't know if, well, many of you, I've gone to Diane Dixon's fundraisers, and I donated dramatically to Duffy's Plan, and I'm really surprised that you, the members, are, from what I understand, strongly agreeing with this project. I don't know if you're aware that the villas at Fashion Island have now applied for a beer and wine conditional use permit that they're going to put in in the Irvine Company's five hundred and twenty-two units. So now we have more traffic, more impact. Saturday night at nine o'clock at night, we had a DUI with a lady that drove into the back of my fence in my backyard. My backyard is the Irvine Company's project. So to say that there's no traffic problem is absurd. I live across the street from Bill Witty's stepmother, and it's a tough area. The traffic lights are horrible. You can have valet parking, but how on earth do those cars still travel on our roadways? There's still a traffic problem. There's still a problem with people drinking and driving in our community. And living here for sixty-four years, I didn't move to Newport Beach because I want it to be Century City. And I understand that Robert Stern is a beautiful, beautiful builder, and he's familiar with Century City and New York, but this is Newport Beach. We're a beach community, and we want to stay the way we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, 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 no, no, no. Please. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Nielsen. I've lived in Newport Beach since I returned to Orange County in nineteen seventy-eight. I worked for the Irvine Company from nineteen seventy-eight to Leo two thousand. I've also served as president of the, or chairman of the museum and also on its board of directors, and I've also served as chairman and a member of the board of directors of the Segersstrom Center for the Arts. I'm here tonight to highlight and talk about the findings and recommendations contained in the staff report. The report comments that the requested GPA and resulting land use is consistent with the available applicable land use policies of the general plan. Significantly, that Museum House is located in an area of Newport Center where multifamily uses are encouraged. Museum House is located in the northerly section of Newport Center area, which encourages development with the greatest building mass and height. The staff report concludes that the size, density, and character of the proposed dwelling units complement the existing land uses in the project area, and the project area includes design elements consistent with the existing land use policies concerning high architectural quality. On page forty of the staff report, the statement is made, "The requested GPA will not eliminate existing or future land uses to the overall detriment to the community, given that the site's size, location, and surrounding uses." In other words, there are many alternatives in the city for cultural purposes. The staff report considered a reduced height alternative, but it found that a significant shade-sadow difference will occur, or would occur, casting more shadow on more dwelling units for longer hours and would exceed shade standards. Report noted that the reduced height alternative comparable to adjoining residential projects will cover ninety percent of the land area compared to thirty percent of the project.
All right, we have to end there.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, please, next.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mike Kerr. I'm the vice chair of the Newport Beach City Arts Commission, and we are appointed by you, the city council, to serve in an advisory capacity to the city council on all matters pertaining to artistic, aesthetic, and cultural aspects of the city. It seems like tonight is a good opportunity to discharge our obligation. And simply, I want to recognize that the building that is being deeded back to the city for community and cultural uses is really important. We don't have enough of facilities in this city to provide the cultural and artistic opportunities that the citizens should have in this community. We, on the Arts Commission, look forward to playing a leading role in figuring out what to do with that building and working with the community to assess what they'd really like to see there. As a comment, though, of the money that's being given to the city in the way of the development benefit, none of it is currently allocated towards that building. And I would urge you not to give us, to give the community, a building without any funding to both fix up the building and maintain it. Buildings are expensive, and without having some source of funding, we're going to be left with a facility that is not of use to anybody, because we're going to need to make changes to it, and we're going to need to maintain it. But that said, we, on the Arts Commission, are very excited about the notion of having a new facility to add to the city. We're sorry to see the museum go, but it'll be better for the county at large for them to be in a bigger space, and we look forward to improving that building for the benefit of all of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom Tucker. My wife Joyce and I are longtime Newport Beach residents, twenty years, actually, and we live on Linda Isle. We want to continue to live in Newport in our retirement years. There are a growing number of us who desire quality, high-rise, luxury living with the highest level of amenities provided by, excuse me, with the high level of amenities provided by Fashion Island. We really don't want to move elsewhere. There is no luxury, high-rise option in Newport Beach, and as a matter of balanced land planning, I think there should be. We want a high level of quality. Museum House is best-in-class. We did our due diligence. We actually toured Related's incredible Century City property, so we actually saw it. Their Century City property is proof positive that Related is the gold standard of high-rise residential developers. The Museum House project is located in the right spot in Fashion Island, surrounded by residential uses with by residential uses with no view impacts on single-family homes anywhere in the city. This is where renowned architect William Pereira envisioned high-rise residential living in the original Fashion Island master plan. That must be true, because two of us said that tonight, so it probably is. Finally, the EIR says there are no significant traffic and other impacts on the community, and Joyce and I urge your approval of this one-of-a-kind project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, sir.
Thank you. My name is Drew Lawler, and I live at 62 Beacon Bay. Well, actually, I live on the Little Island. We're building a Beacon Bay right now. When I was in my 20s, I published a newspaper called the Newport Center News, which we passed out into every office in every office building Newport Center. I think I probably knew Newport Center even better than Tom Nielsen, who just spoke up here. But we almost consider Newport Center built out back in the 1980s, and since that time, the Irvine Companies managed to wedge three more towers in Newport Center, plus the Island Hotel. And I just really feel like this project is just another movement in that direction that takes us away from our roots and away from really who we are as a community in Newport Beach. I've lived here for 58 years. I was born here. This is my hometown. And I think we need to really step back and take a look and see, is this the direction that we really want Newport Beach to continue in? I don't think it is. If you had the time to call, let's say, 100 of your constituents in your districts, I would imagine that a handful would be all for this project, and another handful could care less about it. They'd be completely ambivalent about it, but I think the vast majority would be against it. We can't even water our lawns right now, and yet we're thinking about putting in a 25-story tower. It's just ridiculous. And to that, let me just also add that I think that the idea of them coming in saying they want to build a 25-story tower is just possibly a trick, and it's an old developer trick. They'll say, "Well, we came in with 25 stories. We heard the public comments. Gee whiz, we're going to, we're going to negotiate and move it down to 15 stories, or even 12 stories, even 10 stories." And maybe 10 stories is all they wanted in the first place. But I'd say, no to 25 stories, no to 10 stories, no to 5 stories. This project does not belong in Newport Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please. Next, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Randy Morrison Baird. I'm an attorney and a 30-year-plus resident of the city of Newport Beach. I don't want to repeat some of the things that I have such confidence in Larry Tucker or some of the others who have hit all of the salient points, but what I want to direct all of our attention to is what the facts are. Now, as seen by my little tag here, I am a Museum House supporter, but I don't go blindly into things, and I want to analyze what's there and see what's presented. And I have a lot of confidence in what the Planning Commission has reviewed, what the EIR report says, and what the developers and the museum administrators have done to make sure that the museum's legacy is still there. And that is really what I want to address, is the museum, because we each have many diverse interests in the city of Newport Beach. We are maybe a little bit more homogeneous than other cities, but we are somewhat diverse. We have different interests, and we have different values. So we have to look at what's good for the overall. So not only will we be getting revenues that are going to go directly through our taxes to the city schools, we're also going to give the platform for our museum, which has been struggling. Struggling because it's not all that accessible, and struggling because it doesn't have the space it needs. So we have the opportunity with land that's been given to make it a more central location, and the sale of the property to the related group. And, you know, I really believe in looking at the project as it's proposed, that it's far different than these square rectangles that we have all over Newport Center. They're there, but that doesn't mean that we have to leave the rest of it barren. The museum itself in this small building is not flourishing, and we have the opportunity to do something for the city of Newport Beach and for the county of Orange, and build a wonderful new museum and a beautiful residence that is really seamlessly integrated into what the beauty of Newport Beach is and the Fashion Island, not the big stall buildings.
Thank you very much. Sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Michael Lawler. I live on Ballboll Island, and I want to take exception to the staff report with due respect, but I think they missed the boat on this Measure S analysis. Measure S requires voter approval of any major amendment to the general plan, and a major amendment is one that significantly increases either traffic, intensity, or density. In density, we're talking about how many dwelling units per acre. This is 100 units on two acres. That's 50 units per acre. I don't think there's anything else that even approaches that kind of density in the city. And the only other two projects that they considered on their analysis were the Civic Center project, this project that we're in now, and the Newport Beach Country Club. Both of those had no housing unit increases, and so it really doesn't seem like it was well-guided to take just those two projects. They should have considered the neighboring project just to the north, the villas at Fashion Island. That's 522 units there. And if you take that project in consideration with this project, another 100, I think it certainly, if not violates the letter of Measure S, it's certainly the intent that those voters wanted, the direction for this city council to look at when they're considering a general plan amendment. This is way too dense. The other things I wanted to say in the staff report, it says, "The construction noise, significant and unavoidable, requiring a statement of overriding considerations by this council." I thought that was interesting. The project's beautiful, but it just doesn't belong in Newport Beach. Century City, yes. Irvine, maybe. That's where the architect thought he was tonight. Let him build it in Irvine. I also noticed there's something new. A dog spa? Come on. Is that going to be open to the public? And if so, then it changes. It's not, it's no longer just a residential project. It's a mixed-use project, and I think all these numbers go off the chart.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello, I'm Lynn Hamilton Lang. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of Newport Beach, live in Big Canyon, across the street from the Museum House. Since 100 units have been previously approved for development in Fashion Island, I'm in favor of the Museum House, and I want to make two points. First of all, the proposed Museum House will enhance Fashion Island with the proposed design and the height and the style fit, and will enhance the luxury brand of Fashion Island. And the location is in the perfect spot, which is where the other residents in Fashion Island are located. We also know from the EIR that there's no significant impact on the environment. With the 100 units that will be going into Fashion Island, I would like to see these 100 units being designated as the Museum House, because this allows Orange County Museum of Art to take the proceeds of the sale of the land and put it towards a world-class contemporary art museum on the land that has been donated to them, which is located in the Orange County Performing Arts Area. And it will benefit everybody in our community. So Newport Beach is not losing a museum, but Orange County is gaining a world-class museum. So I ask that you approve the Museum House so that the museum may build a world-class museum that will benefit all of the residents in Orange County.
Thank you. Next, sir.
Good evening. Eddie Melfarre, a resident of Spyglass Hill since 2001. I have a very basic, very fundamental, general, common sense question, and I respectfully request every single one of you to not even respond, but just ponder upon this simple, basic question, and that is with regard to the public benefits, which was in two, three presentations, and in one page was quantified by a bunch of dollar-signing numbers. My question is, what is the definition of "public"? Is public us, the resident of the city of Newport Beach, who own land and buildings in this great city, or public or others? If it is us, my question is, in addition to more pollution, more traffic, more pressure on our already pressured utility system, especially natural resources and water, what do we, as the real public, will get as a benefit of this high-rise? I respectfully request every single one of you, as our elected officials with our votes, to protect our rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard Lang. A voice problem to have been where Dr. Stern was, I guess. But anyway, longtime resident, 40-plus years, Big Canyon. So we're very intimately impacted by what goes on here in Fashion Island. And I was initially, like so many, opposed to it. I don't want any more traffic and all of that sort of thing. But I've changed and gone 180 degrees. I have, because I really looked at the facts. So much of this, I think, accrues to the building of the rat Warren that I call Red City over there. I think that's a problem. But I think, and so much of it spills over onto the Museum House. I think that's a huge part of the problem. I certainly would be, am opposed, but it's already, you know, that's a fact. But the Museum House is a whole other, a horse of a different color. I think it's aesthetically beautiful building. I think it's going to be an asset. I think the money that will flow to the museum, the art museum, I think is incredibly important. I think that museum has struggled in the area that it's in. I think it needs a more central location, and I think that it needs the money to grow. I thought that's a huge part of the importance of the Museum House itself. And others have said many of the other things. I don't need to go to that. I believe the impact in terms of traffic and utilization of utilities, I think that I'm satisfied that that's not going to be significant in terms of those issues. So I'm very much in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Kurt English. I began coming to Newport Beach with one of my college friends, and he persuaded me to move here. Now I own a boat in the harbor and coach youth sports here. And I want to encourage you to support the museum project. Newport Beach can benefit through property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, and a nice developer fee that was discussed earlier today. And I want to urge you to reject the arguments from the opponents of property rights regarding this project. One of them, Susan Skinner, is a liberal activist that has opposed other people's property rights for years. She is a serial litigant and has sued the city of Newport Beach. In fact, the judge in the Measure Y lawsuit threw her case out, and the city attorney criticized Skinner for trying to change the ballot arguments at the 13th hour. The lawsuit seemed frivolous. Former council member Jean Watt has opposed property rights for years and opposed the Castaways Project back in the day, and even tried to pass Measure A to tax Newport Beach residents to buy the property so she could enjoy it the way she wanted to use it. Thousands of young boys have enjoyed playing baseball at Bob Henry Park because, I don't think it's your turn, sir. Be quiet.
Please, please.
Get the picture. It's not your turn. Be quiet.
Please, let's just keep speaking, please.
Thousands of little boys have had an opportunity to play baseball in Bob Henry Park because the developer donated the property, and a park was put on it, and Measure A was defeated. SPON opposed the toll road, which is a wonderful traffic diverter, and imagine how bad the traffic would be in Newport Beach if we didn't have the 73 toll road. Please oppose this anti-property rights activism and those who have a serial opposition to property rights. Some of them could be called CAVE, the Citizens Against Virtually Everything. I encourage you to support this project. It fits within the green light parameters, as discussed earlier, and the green light parameters were created by the people who oppose the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, next speaker, please.
That's hard to follow. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and members of the city council. My name is Dorothy Kraus, and I am proud to say I am on the board of SPON, Stop Polluting Our Newport, and an officer and the project manager for Line in the Sand Political Action Committee. SPON and Line in the Sand respectfully urge you to vote no on all discretionary approvals presented to you tonight. I'd now like to take just a moment and turn around and ask everyone that opposes the proposed project, simply raise your hand. Raise your hand if you oppose this project. Thank you. I'd also like to share with you briefly the results of a petition campaign mentioned by Mr. Ramirez earlier circulated by SPON and Line in the Sand to Newport Beach residents. To date, over 1,800, 1,800 online signatures have been submitted asking for a no vote. Of the 1,800 submitted, many included very moving comments that I'm going to share with you in a moment. These comments express a worry and a fear and frustration that our town is headed, where our town is headed, will be precedent-setting if this project is approved. So here is the first comment I'd like to share with you. By approving this project, you are laughing in the face of the residents who voted for you. Please listen to your constituency. This project makes no sense and will ruin what makes Newport Beach so special. The project will forever change our city and provide developers an open opportunity to crowd ever more high-rise residential buildings into the area. This project clearly exhibits a dismissive slap in the face to the citizens of Newport Beach and its general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Steve Unin. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat?
Steve Unin.
All right, thank you.
I'm a citizen of Newport Beach for the last 12 years. If I may just address the person who is standing here before me. I think it's actually really disgraceful to bring politics into it, calling someone liberal activist. I myself am a conservative Republican. I oppose this project, so let's not throw labels around, okay? But my main point is this, is that I moved here in Newport Beach from Laguna Beach about 12 years ago because traffic was so bad, and gradually, it's gotten worse and worse. There's no doubt about it, especially in Newport Center, since the city hall went in and expanded Fashion Island and other things in this neighborhood. Now we got another 500 apartments coming in around the corner as well, and now we have another 100 residential housing. It just never seems to stop. Newport Center is getting very, very crowded. I do believe this project requires a public vote based on the overall residential unit cap that was assigned to this area on the Green Light Initiative. And I do ask that there is a vote. Developer made some very compelling arguments why this project should move forward. There's lots of fees the city will accumulate, and there's some benefits certainly to the museum community at large. However, there's also the detriment and the sensitivities that people feel about traffic in this area. So I do ask that the city council put a vote. I don't know if the developer would support the public's voice in this. I don't know why he wouldn't. I mean, he thinks it's a very good and compelling project. Hopefully, he'll support that. And just as a reminder, the city council, two years ago, we had a vote here on expanding the residential cap through Measure Y here in Newport Center, and it was defeated by 70% to 30%. That should tell you a sense of the will of the people. They don't want to see more development in Newport Center. We don't want to break the caps on residential housing. It was almost more than two to one against it. So consider that as you weigh the option before you tonight. I do ask that you put it to a vote and let this controversial project be decided by the people rather than being done through whatever means the developers are trying to persuade the city council with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. I'm Craig Wells, the current president and chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Orange County Museum of Art. As has been stated here earlier, that in 2008, there was a generous offer of land given by the Segregative Center for the Arts made to the museum. The board then had the decision to make about our future, and that future, we felt, would be eminently brighter and more secure with a move to the arts campus in Orange County. Our museum has outgrown its current facility. We need to be at the center of the arts and culture of the county to maintain our viability and serve even more people in the community than what we currently do in Newport Beach. Location matters for all businesses, including that of the museum. Location matters for all businesses and including that of the museum. The late Henry Segersham believed, and I'll quote, "The addition of the Orange County Museum of Art would create a unique arts complex, one of the largest and finest in America," unquote. And we certainly agree with that. Few years ago, the Board of Trustees, after the gift of the land, had a very thoughtful, thorough, and deliberate process to determine what would be the highest and best use of an asset, a piece of property, two acres. Residential projects seemed to be the answer as opposed to an office building or more retail space. And we promised ourselves on the board to select a firm and a project and an architect that we could be proud of. And we believe that the related company and the architect, Robert M. Stern and Company, have done exactly that with part of our vision to accomplish a high quality. As we continue on our move to the Segersham Center, we know that after fifty years in Newport Beach, we will miss being here. We are grateful for those of you on the council and in the audience that have been supporters of the museum over the years. The Board of Trustees has therefore made the intent to donate our second parcel of land to the city of Newport Beach. And we hope that you will accept that and vote for this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Gordon Glass. I have been here since nineteen fifty-five and am now residing in Big Canyon. I think that we primarily are missing the core of the problem, and that's the height, just the height, not the fact that you want to put some more housing right next to what is a lot of housing right now, and in five hundred units, it's going to be a lot more. It's the height. And the danger is that the way the, all of the paperwork is written, in the EIR and everything else, there is no control or protection about precedent. But this will not be the only one we build for tall housing. Over the years, over a hundred years, Newport Beach has been essentially a horizontal residential city. The tallest building of residences right now is next to the Lido Bridge. It's nine floors. It's been there for almost fifty years. If there were a groundswell of need or wishes or whatever for taller, it would have shown up before now. The only reason this thing is that tall is because by a quirk of fate, it happened to have a three-hundred-foot height limit on it. Every zone has height limits. It's part of zoning. Housing is sixty-five feet. I offer you a compromise, which is the political lifeblood, a compromise. Rezone it for housing at the same height that the housing all around it already is, sixty-five feet. Then we will not have a split city again. We'll all feel better. There will be no precedent that anybody can pop in anywhere they want, buy a hunk of land, build a parking structure on it, and a tower on top. Because think what the whole city would look like, and believe me, if this goes through, it'll look like that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and city council. My name is Bolton Colburn. I'm a museum professional that spent the last twenty-five years in the arts institutions of Orange County. The last, well, fifteen years as the former, as the director of Laguna Art Museum and currently Heroes Hall supervisor, which is a new veterans museum that's opening up in February in Costa Mesa. I have to tell you, I drove here tonight into your parking lot and pinched myself. And I pinched myself for one really good reason. This would have been the Renzo Piano building that the Newport Harbor Art Museum had. This would have been the site. And the plan isn't all that off from what Renzo Piano had originally designed. What a missed opportunity that was. That would have taken the arts in Orange County and really put it on the maps internationally in a way that just hasn't occurred. This is a chance, with this new project, to move that agenda in Orange County into the international spotlight as a major hub for the arts, the visual arts in Orange County, something that's clearly lacking. I can't believe this opportunity is here. I'm amazed. I can't believe you have somebody of the likes of Tom Main, who is going to be designing the new museum building onboard to, you know, put something incredible across. You've got Robert Sterns designing the building here. This is amazing. I just, it seems like a perfect equation to me. And I'm here personally. I'm not representing any cultural institution tonight, but I just wanted to urge you to approve the grant and the requested entitlements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Ruth Kobayashi, and I live in Harbor Cove, across Jamboree from the police department. I've mixed emotions about the proposed museum house project, as we have endured years of construction with the Meridian Project and the Irvine Company Huge, all caps, apartment project. Frankly, we have construction fatigue. Having said that, I'm actually now supportive of the museum house project. I've met with the developer and their representatives, and they are people of high standards and integrity. My priority on behalf of my community is to ensure that Related California and their crews conduct their work in a way that puts the least possible burden on our community. Therefore, I will share with you what they have agreed to in our ongoing discussions. They have agreed to provide a neighborhood ambassador who residents may contact during business hours should questions or concerns come up about the project, in addition to some type of web-based solution for project information availability. They will direct construction traffic to not use Jamboree or Santa Barbara. Jamboree is particularly important, as we've witnessed with the apartment complex by the Irvine Company due to the CDM High School teen drivers to and from school. They will provide, excuse me, traffic enforcement dedicated to construction, traffic violations, detours, and necessary mitigations, and will work with the police department to do this at their own expense. And they will create a good neighbor environment and working with Harbor Cove for advanced notifications of possible burdens on our community. If you approve this project, I respectfully encourage you to hold the developer to the highest standards of quality, integrity, and commitment to its neighbors. And I'd like to add that I've lived in Harbor Cove since its inception, and if everyone didn't want anything built, I would not have my home.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of the city council. Bruce Bartram, thirty-year residence of the city of Newport Beach. On page three of the staff report, Mr. Ramirez mentions that it's the applicant's intention to target the high-end residential market. However, he doesn't give any figures in terms of the cost of these homes that are supposedly going to be built. However, in the planning commission hearings in his staff report, at that time, he did mention that it is that the intention of the developer is that the beginning price for these units will start out at $2 million and top off at $4 million. So who's going to purchase these homes? The Sacramento Bee has a website on affordability of housing in cities, in the city of California, what kind of household income you need. For the city of Newport Beach, the median home price is $1,367,250. Assuming a twenty percent down payment and a four percent mortgage rate, the income needed, household income needed, is $270,000. These homes or condominium units begin at four, $2 million. How much income is needed for that? Looking at other cities, the closest I've found is the city of Beverly Hills. The median home price there is $2.2 million, and a household income needed to afford that kind of home in Beverly Hills is $435,000. So we'll say $400,000 minimum income to afford the developer's condominiums. Who can afford that? The idea that a person will walk to their job is ridiculous.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Roger Davis, and I wasn't going to start here, but I have to rebut that. These are not median homes for median residents. These are for relatively high-end residents, and this city is full of them. I'm one of the people, I'm not super rich, but I want to be first in line for this. I have dozens of friends who want to do it too. You heard from a Realtor. I'm sure the builder has done his research. There are multimillion-dollar homes all over Newport Beach. We have an empty nest. Our children went away. Thank God they didn't move back. We now need a single level, and my mutt would love the dog spa, which I'm sure will be private, by the way. But I want to go somewhere else. People are entitled to their own opinions but not their own facts. There's a fact in this presentation earlier by the staff about the traffic, and I was struck by the traffic that's there now. A hundred and odd, eight, a hundred and eight trips a day on San Clemente Drive. This is the Orange County Museum of Art, and they have a hundred and eight car trips a day. How can any museum survive and be even a national class? They have a national-class collection. They bring in great exhibits, but people don't know where San Clemente Drive is. It has low visibility, low access from the freeway. It has no other cultural things around it other than movie theaters. The advantage of moving it to where they are, there is a repertory theater that is national class. There's our own symphony orchestra. There's the Philharmonic Society, which brings in world-class orchestras. This museum deserves to be there. It'll be a gift to the whole county, but it also accrues to Newport Beach's benefit because it allows this county to become better culturally, to draw more people into the arts, and improve the general welfare of the whole county. It's not the Newport Beach Museum of Art. It's the Orange County Museum of Art, and you have an opportunity to have a new place for people like me and many of my friends to live and to improve the museum and to make my dog very happy.
Thank you very much. Next, sir.
Mayor, council members. My name's Brett Hales. I am a business owner and tenant at Newport Center. The prospect of walking to work is actually something I find very, very favorable with this project. But last week, at the Newport Beach Public Library, there was a presentation on the history of the planning and development of Newport Center. Over a hundred people gathered and the friends and family of the library room to listen to Stephen Kellenberg, the Honorable Alberto Trevino Jr., and Bill Watt, who were the speakers. Watt was responsible for construction of Fashion Island, and Trevino was the main designer from the Irvine Company and later a presidential assistant secretary of housing and urban development under three U.S. presidents. After the hour-long presentation about the planning and development of the area, there was a question and answer from the audience. Planning Commissioner Brad Hilgrin asked a question of the speakers and began by saying that people often come to the planning commission and represent what the original designers would or would not think about what the proposals like, the museum house. When asked directly, Alberto Trevino Jr., the master designer of Fashion Island from the Irvine Company, stated, "The proposal to add residential-like museum house directly next to Fashion Island is exactly what needs to stay vibrant and successful." Bill Watt, who constructed Fashion Island, responded that the proposal in the project is fantastic. These are the men who planned and built Newport Center in the sixties, and they directly support the proposal as good planning. These are the people that the council should listen to and not the people who oppose anything and focus on an eye towards planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I'm here as an opponent to the museum house. I'm also here to incorporate by reference the prior comments and current comments against this project by the opponents. We need to be able to trust our leaders to act in our best interest. However, the majority of you were elected with the help of campaign manager Dave Ellis, and Mr. Ellis is widely reported to be lobbying you on behalf of the museum house. So when you approve this project without modification, are you voting in my best interests or the best interests of Mr. Ellis? It's hardly a level playing field. So how else can we determine where your loyalties lie? Line in the Sand is planning a referendum that will force this project to a citywide vote and will begin as soon as the city council approves this project. I can't tell you if this council really thinks this is a good project or not, but I can tell you that you are working hard to thwart this referendum and prevent the residents from having a meaningful say in this project. We have thirty days to collect eight thousand signatures, and because this meeting was pushed from November twenty-two to November twenty-nine, our timeframe now overlaps with Christmas. However, here is your most egregious act. The petition carried for the referendum must include all the documents referred to in the ordinance that you will approve tonight. A typical petition length is fifty pages. You have specifically included documents that will make each and every petition several thousand pages long. Our lawyer says she has never seen this done before, but you're just about to do it. You may stand with developers, or you may stand with the residents, but on this issue, you may not stand with both. When you approve the museum house, you push Newport Beach one step closer to looking like Los Angeles. But this time, you've gone a step too far. This is our tipping point. This is our line in the sand. The referendum starts tonight.
Thank you very much.
So how do you really feel? That's my daughter.
Please proceed.
My name is Nancy Skinner, and I've lived in Newport Beach since nineteen sixty-two, and I had written something tonight for a change and timed it perfectly for three minutes. And now I can't fit it all in, so I'm going to try to just wing it. I just wanted to say that I think you're all good people. I mean, I don't know what my daughter's leaving the message with, but I think you're all good people. But I want you to really think about your representation of all the citizens in this community, and that's what I was going to talk about and give you some examples, that we'd like for you to do what the citizens would like in this city. And if you really don't know what that is, I really think this should go to a vote. I mean, somebody else articulated that very nicely this evening, that we really would like to, if enough citizens want to have the museum house, I'm fine with that, but let's put it to a vote. And I wanted just also to comment that we've had a couple of votes that should let you know, well, those of you who are new maybe not don't know this, but the Green Light vote was like a two-to-one vote in favor. The Measure Y vote was like seventy percent opposed to it. So there's a pretty good evidence that the residents in this community really would like to have this much development and become like Century City. And I think the solution to that is to put it to a vote. You can do that. The city staff doesn't agree with me and a lot of other people about whether or not it should be a Green Light vote, because I think they didn't really go back to look over what Phil Arst had said in front of the city council when they were, when Green Lights issue came up while the 2006 general plan was being discussed. At that time, Mr. Arst, who was the co-author and the spokesperson for Green Light, came to the city council, and Ed Selich may remember this, and said that it was, it would be, even with changing the hotel rooms to dwelling units, would it still count as a Green Light vote? And the answer was yes. So the fact that the seventy-nine hotel rooms got exchanged have never been counted by our city staff, and that's what I think, why we think we should have a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor Dixon, council members. My name's Peter Tennyson. I'm not a liberal activist. Before I retired, I was a twenty-year member of the Lincoln Club. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-five, and I want to point out to you just underscore a couple deceptive things you saw in the presentations tonight. You heard multiple times, this new project or this proposed project will not obstruct anyone's view of the ocean. That is only a true statement if you put the word completely in front of obstruct. There are hundreds, perhaps thousands, of us who live on the other side of this project who will see our ocean views partly obscured. Yes, I'll be able to look over it and see the ocean, but I'll miss some of the other things I used to see. The other thing you heard a lot of times was, this just extends the crescent of high-rise buildings. What you really shouldn't infer from that is it's just filling in the gap in the wall. There were a couple of mistakes, like the Pimco building, we can't undo because it's already up, but you can stop this one. Lastly, I'd say, I like museums. I have a lot of friends who are very involved in the art museum. I fully support their idea that they ought to have a nice new building over in Costa Mesa if they want it. in Costa Mesa, if they want it. However, I don't think they should be able to fund their nice new building in Costa Mesa, instead of writing checks themselves and getting their friends to raise funds, by obscuring the views and imposing traffic and noise on the rest of us in Newport Beach, and basically selling out our quality of life so they can build their museum somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Vlad Anderson. Good evening, Mayor, city council, staff, city manager. My name is Vlad Anderson, and I am the president of the Newport Beach Police Association. I've had the opportunity to work in this great city for over two decades, and I've seen a lot of development in the city. I remember working here before the city extended close to Laguna Beach. I've seen beautiful homes built out of the hillside. I've seen some beautiful houses remodeled to become some beautiful homes. And I've seen that during the night. I've seen that during storms, and I've seen that throughout many patrol watches. And I'm fortunate to understand that that is part of Newport Beach. But I've seen some development in this city that, quite frankly, I questioned, but didn't have the opportunity, as an employee of the city, to make any comments. As I said earlier, my name is Vlad Anderson. I am the president of Newport Beach Police Association, and along with the Newport Beach Fires Association, we are here in the strong support of the Museum House, residential project by related companies, and urge you to approve it tonight. As an association, we made a commitment starting this year to help support quality projects around town. This successful formula has been used in cities around Orange County, and so we believe the significant projects that merit our support will be backed by us going forward. As it pertains to this parcel in question, we know that this is the last significant piece of residential units in the Fashion Island area. We are pleased to provide thoughts on why the Museum House has our strong support. We believe the House project and developer are of the highest caliber and quality. The draft EIR shows that the Museum House will have no significant long-term impacts. This was important to our decision to endorse the Museum House. This project will not significantly impact traffic patterns and water supply.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Mayor Dixon, and council and staff, my name is Dennis Baker. I am the treasurer of SPON, which you've heard mentioned a few times tonight. All of you sitting up there supported Measure Y. 70% of the population, voting population disagreed with you. I am a guy that likes to run numbers. So I took this ad that was in the Sunday Daily Pilot, has 235 signatures on it, and I did a little analysis on it. First thing I noticed was that they were not put in any kind of order, no alphabet or anything. So it's very difficult to look for any duplicates. When I analyzed it, this is what I came up with. There were 235 ad signatures on this. That's eliminating the associations. Out of that, 120 of those were registered Newport Beach voters. That's right about half, which means the other half are not registered voters. You are not representing them. They did not vote for you. And most of them, actually, that I found that were registered in the county, because I do have the whole county's database, were in Irvine, were in Santa Ana, were in Seal Beach, and so on. So basically, we had half the people on this right here, don't live here, don't vote here. The other thing is, y'all should get some money back, because there's five people who are on here twice, double voting. Their names appear twice. You won't pick that up if you just look at it, because they're not next to each other, because they're not in any order. Those people are Karen Root, Marsha Cashin, Roger Davison, Sue Stern, and Linda Wilson. Linda Wilson does not live in this district. She does not vote in this district. The other people do. But they can't vote twice, even though they're listed twice. This is supposed to be representative government. You follow the same thing as everything else in this country. It's representative government. You should be representing the population. Mr. Woody made reference to 300 people signing their petition. As Dorothy said earlier, 1,800 people have signed our petition. I have validated that every single one of those, not every signer, but every single one of those 1,800 are voters in the city of Newport Beach. There's an additional 2,600 people that are associated with SPON that are also voters in this city.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm Lou Stavali. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and Newport Beach, in my opinion, is recognized worldwide as a progressive and forward-thinking city. I believe that the staff, the planning commission, that has unanimously approved this project is on target. This project is another jewel that's necessary for the further development and growth of Newport Beach. I strongly support the project, and I look forward to your positive vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Pat Fusco, longtime resident of Newport Beach, 42 years. I'm here to lend my voice in support of the project, and I have three reasons. First is change. The second is trends, and the last is pride. With change, I think all of us will agree how much we look at the past with a lot of affection, and God knows how often we wish we could go back to the past and live there. But we can't, and so what most of us, I'm afraid, tend to do is grab on to the present and not let it change. But many of us have learned that that doesn't work, and that change is inevitable, and it's better to accept it and adapt to it and shape it on your behalf. This project is a good change for Newport Beach, and we can shape it on our behalf. Secondly, with trends, it's no secret that everybody in the world is moving back to community centers or city centers. It's because it's walkable. It's where stores and restaurants and open space is next door. Well, Newport Center is one of those places. Lastly, pride. I'm married to a fine artist, and she's taught me one thing at least, and that is that beauty matters, and this is a drop-dead gorgeous building, just like this city hall. You'll drive by it every day and smile and go, "That is one cool-looking building." So I hope you'll vote for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon and city council members. My name is Sharon Coke. I've been a resident of the city of Newport Beach for over 40 years, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the Museum House project. It might be a beautiful building, and it might be a great project, were it being built in Century City, or along the Wilshire Corridor, or Beverly Hills, or downtown L.A., or Koreatown. It does not belong in the city of Newport Beach. Its height is oppressive. It will block some views. It concentrates people who are not going to live in the city full-time. It may as well be another hotel, for that matter, for the amount of time that even the architect has indicated the residents will be in residence. We are a beach city. We are not an urban corridor, nor are we an industrial organization. We are a beach city, a beach city that relies upon tourist industry and relies upon its natural resources to profit and fund its industry. Building this house based on the idea that it will fund the museum is the wrong way to look at this. They really are two separate and discreet issues. One is funding the museum. Second is building more residences in an area that cannot and will not support them, and this will not bring residents who walk to the amenities of Newport, Fashion Island. Therefore, I ask you, please oppose this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Barry Allen. I live across the street in Harborview Hills. I've only got two minutes. This adds 63,000 square feet of development on the current museum site. Would require you to amend the voter-approved general plan. Would require you to change the zoning on currently-approved community development plan. The IR gives no consideration to the significance of environmental damage of the above items. Since when has 63,000 added development on two acres of land been insignificant, as they've said? That's your staff. Now, I think staff is being directed by some people, but that's what happened. The next fact is, these are called luxury condos. The developer constantly calls them luxury condos. I've pointed this out to him ever since he had talked the first time across in the room about luxury condos. The traffic engineer will tell you, if these are luxury condos, the traffic model that your staff has come up with is wrong. We're entitled to a Green Light vote, because then the traffic goes up, from what they're saying in this particular plan is. They're putting it down for condominiums, not luxury condominiums. The last thing is, if the developer tells you these things are going to sell for $4 million, make some kind of a deal with him if you approve it, that anything he gets over $4 million for any of them, he gives to the city. Because I've been told that the top floors are going to go for $10 to $20 million by a real estate agent, and I've been told that the middle floors are probably going to go for $5 to $10 million. So that's all I can say, because I don't have any more time. But that's, I think you ought to vote this thing down, period, end of case. If not, send it to a vote, because it's entitled to a Green Light vote, by law that you're required to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Bob Curry. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for 41 years. I live in Big Canyon. I'm standing in front of you as a resident and a voter, not as a developer, and I'm glad to take Marsha Cashin's place on the written piece of paper that they said she signed twice, so I'm going to substitute my name in for that. You know, we can talk about what our opinions are, what our facts are. The facts in this case are very simple. We're standing on the 1953 Boy Scout Jamboree Place. Tents were here, and I suspect there are people in this room today who would say, "God, if we put any building here other than a tent, it's going to be Los Angeles, or it's going to be Santa Monica." And that's probably true, that we moved in that direction. We are a developing, dynamic city, and whatever we do, it's going to continue to develop and continue to be dynamic, and we need to make the city dynamic as it fits into that category. Everybody, virtually everybody has gotten up here and said, "This is a beautiful building," but wonderfully, the architecture is great. The increase in traffic is insubstantial. But by the way, if that's bad, we'll close one Starbucks, and we'll have taken care of all of the traffic problems and reduce the traffic problems. It isn't an increase in traffic. The city and the staff have said it's not a water problem. So the facts are, this isn't going to hurt anything. What will it give us? It will give us a world-class, or the possibility of a world-class art museum. I wonder how many people here have been down to the museum in the last four months and seen the fabulous Phillips collection from the Phillips Museum in Washington. Who's there? I guarantee you, if we're getting 108 trips a day, there are more people in an hour at the Phillips Museum, because this museum will not hold and cannot continue like it should. I say, vote for this, please.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Philip Greer. I live up in Newport Coast. Exactly three weeks ago, we had an election that decided who would be our next group of city council people. The results of that election allowed us to understand a couple of things. The first thing that I think we need to understand is I got smoked. At the same time, Mr. Amari also got smoked. But we have to first congratulate Will O'Neill and wish him best and good luck on this adventuris on. But the election results also told another story. Between Mr. Amari and myself, we got over 50% of the vote, and that vote was based upon our opposition to Museum House. So over 50% of the voters in this city voted for a candidate that did not want Museum House. In District 5, Mr. Hurdman won. And again, Mr. Hurdman was supported by Line in the Sand and these groups that are opposed to Museum House. The public does not want this property to be built. They've represented that in terms of how they voted, and they've represented that in terms of how they voted on previous referendums. For three of you who are leaving the city council, this is going to be a legacy vote, because regardless of the good things that you have done over the years, and you've done a lot of good things, this is the vote that is your last substantive vote, and this is the vote that people are going to remember. And you have the opportunity to be remembered either as another Evelyn Hart or as another Dick Nichols. For the four of you who are remaining and will transition onto the new city council, the question becomes, how much political capital are you willing to spend on this project? There's going to be a referendum. There's going to be lawsuits. How much are you willing to spend of the taxpayers' money to defend something that the people don't want? How much are you willing to spend to defend something that is not conducive to this community? You now seek to endorse a project that is going to result, as I said, in litigation and a referendum, and the taxpayers are going to pay for that. I urge you to vote no on this.
Thank you. Thank you. No. It's quiet, please. Next speaker, ma'am.
My name is Carol Conover. I live in Irvine Terrace. When I open my front door, I will see the Museum House. I would like to just briefly talk about the parking that is being provided. 250 parking spaces, 200 parking spaces for the residents and 50 guest parking spaces. The 200, the resident parking spaces underneath the building are all tandem parking. A third of those are only eight and a half feet wide parking stalls, which, to me, are compact-sized parking stalls. I don't know, I've not ever parked in tandem parking, but I know that when you, you know, you're going to have to coordinate, all the residents are going to have to coordinate with when they leave, with who they're leaving with. The other thing is, 250 parkings, 200 parking stalls, the report says that it's planned for 234 residents, so I don't know where the extra 34 residents are parking. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about was, or just encourage, is maybe this just gets, the vote gets postponed until after the Irvine Company project apartments open up, and you see really how much traffic gets built up with those 500 apartments on that little corner of land over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Robert Gimm, and I've lived in Newport Beach for 51 years, so I think I beat a lot of people in this room. If my good fortune endures, I'll hopefully live here for another 51 years. I live across the street. You know, I didn't have any preconceived opinions about this project, and I really didn't pay much attention to it until it was approved by the Planning Commission, and then I reached out to the development company and asked them if I could come and see some of the plans and renderings, because there really wasn't much in circulation that I had gotten my hands on. And they were very kind to invite me to their office and show me all of their plans and renderings, much of the same material that was shown this evening. And, you know, I developed a very favorable impression of the building. I was probably likely to have one, because I've traveled to New York on numerous occasions and seen several of Mr. Stern's buildings and walked through them, and they are extraordinary. And the developer as well is known for building an extraordinary product, and I've seen the Century. I've been through several of the units there. So I guess, you know, I embrace sensible change, and I embrace the idea of moving forward in a positive direction when it's been given proper thought and consideration. And I just can't find any specific objection to this that isn't somewhat convoluted or based in, based on issues that don't really have anything to do with this project. I'm sorry that the lady who donated all the money to your campaigns can't get you to vote in her favor, and I'm sorry that somebody's worried about drunk drivers, but they really don't have anything to do with this specific project, nor will this specific project automatically make it possible for people to follow and build more. There are 100 units left. This building complies with all of the requirements. It's beautiful. It's built by the best of the people that do this kind of thing, in a very, very, kind of off-the-beaten-path location. Yes, you will see the upper parts of the building from a distance, but it will become part of the fabric of that skyline, as has been the intent for over 50 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The first issue I'd like to speak to is one you heard early in the staff's presentation. That is the helipad issue. I understand you cannot take any action tonight unless you get clearance from the Airport Land Use Commission. Among that pile of stuff that was in the lobby, there was a letter dated today that purports to give that clearance from the Airport Land Use Commission. But Mayor Dixon and Ms. Brant and I were at the meeting at the Airport Land Use Commission on November 17, and on November 17th, and if less my memory is faulty, this letter is not what the Airport Land Use Commission asked for. They said that before they would be happy with this project, they needed a statement in writing, either on paper or by email from the FAA stating that they had cleared the project. This is a summary of phone calls, some of which don't even seem related to that issue, and they specifically said phone calls would not be acceptable. So I fully expect you might at some time get a statement from the FAA, but you do not have it tonight. Second issue I wanted to comment on is an earlier speaker erroneously said that 100 dwelling units had been previously added and approved in Newport Center, and your question tonight was just where they should go. I hope you understand that no units have been added. That's what you're being asked to do tonight. The question is why you should be adding them and whether the voters have a chance to second-guess your approval if you were to grant approval tonight. As you well know, in 2006, the voters agreed to add 450 units. 79 have been added since then, and our city staff, which in dealing with the height issue is able to tell you that when it's set at the 300 feet, applied only to non-residential, somehow we could interpret that to apply to residential, tells you somehow the 79 don't count. Their reasoning is it's never been added to the general plan by a formal amendment. I would like to point out to you tonight that they have been added to the general plan by a formal amendment. In 2013, the former city council approved a new housing element, and the housing element acknowledges the existence of 79 units that didn't exist before. So this does indeed need a green light vote by any interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Alan Beek. It was a great pleasure to hear the former Planning Commission Director, Gordon Glass, come up with a very reasonable and sensible way out of the dilemma that you are in. You were elected to represent the people of New York Beach. They trusted you to run the city as they would like to have it run. You have a dilemma now. I don't think there can be any disagreement, that there is some disagreement about how, whether you should vote yes or no. Nancy Skinner, formerly honored as Woman of the Year, has offered a very reasonable way for you to avoid any way of not fulfilling your duty to that responsibility. That's to put it to a vote of the people. I think I know how the people would vote. It's obvious the developer knows how the people would vote since he very carefully just hit the limit at 100. If he'd wanted the vindication of the support of the people, he would have gone to 101 and gotten that vote to show the people were behind him. Obviously, he knows the people are against him. We know the people are against him. You know the people are against them, and the only way you can pass this thing without showing contempt for the people who elected you is to put it to a vote or to vote no. If you don't do that, you are showing contempt for us. This machine, so that I still have
Please.
36 seconds. I hope you won't feel contempt for me if I don't use them.
Please. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Anita Mishuk. I spoke on a couple of occasions to the City Planning Commission. It was not my intention to get up here this evening and to speak to you. There are many people in this room who are residents of Newport Beach, members of the museum, fully in support of this. This is a wonderful project, well within the general plan. You've heard from your own Planning Commission people that they've done their due diligence on every single aspect of this. I know that there are people here who are very concerned. I respect their concern, although I don't think that there is any foundation for them to be so desperate about such a beautiful building going in with such a world-class architect in back of it. And I wanted to end, if I possibly could, on a much sweeter note. I want to thank you all for your extraordinary patience, and I want to thank the Planning Commission for everything that they've done this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Joy Brenner, and I didn't plan to speak either this evening, and I really don't come with a real bias. I've lived here for 55 years. That doesn't mean that I am anti-growth. I believe in progress. I believe in beautifying our city, and, you know, I don't want to stick with the old little decrepit places that we have in Old Corona Del Mar. I want things to improve, but I think it needs to be improved in a manner consistent with our beachside city. This is not, you know, this could be called Trump Tower West. This is not something that is what we in Newport Beach have traditionally seen as our city. And one of the things that concerns me is if you take 100 units here and give them that, then what about all the rest of the places around Newport Center and the rest of the city that then want to redevelop to be more, stay more progressive and update their properties, and they might need an additional five units or something like that? You've taken your entire number of units that we can have for future development, and you've invested in this one tower. And I think it's really a misnomer to call it the museum house because if several floors of this building were being devoted to a museum and then having residential units on top of it, then I think you could call it the museum house. And my last point is somebody earlier mentioned property rights. And I'm a big proponent of property rights. I don't think that we have the right to interfere more than we have to in people's use of their property. But this is public property that was given to us, the people of Newport Beach, for a cultural part of our community. So this is our property, and to take it and give it to someone else who wants to make millions and millions of dollars is not fair to the city. So put it to a vote, and then you guys are off the hook.
Thank you very much. Please. Please respect the rules. Thank you. Yes, next speaker.
Yes, my name is Julia Royal-Gold, and I've been a resident in Newport Beach, Corona Del Mar, for approximately 50 years. And I have been a lawyer for longer than that. And listening to the issues tonight, and also am a member of the museum, and recall when it was contemplated that this spot here would be the Renzo Piano Museum that everyone would be proud of. That did not happen, as you can see, we're here. What I would, there was an interesting question by, is it Mr. Whitty? Mr. Whitty asked this evening, he said, he asked you, the council, what's in it for the city? I think that's the wrong question. I think the question is what's in it for the residents? You represent the residents. And I'm sure, I just wish that you could avoid all of the problems that would disrupt this city by agreeing to a vote. That's a very simple matter. Litigation or anything is just horrible, and the residents of Newport Beach will accept the results of an election. And the last speaker was right. It takes you off the hook. It's very simple. Very simple. Just as Mr. Beek said, let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other speakers who could hear me in the community room? Want to hustle over? Are any other speakers? Want to make sure that I canvass anyone changing their mind, wanting to speak? Okay, we have a taker.
My name's Paul McManigle, and I had the pleasure of being here for two meetings with the Planning Commission. And I just want to give the city council members the feeling that I had at being out at that meeting. They listened very carefully to all the kinds of talk that you just heard. They went through every one of the objections. They did so extremely thoroughly, and they wound up with unanimous decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other speakers? Please come forward. All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Now, I'll turn this over to staff. Are there any few questions that were asked that technical questions perhaps need to be clarified, one specifically on the FAA matter? Do you want to clarify that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dixon. So what I have provided to you is a memorandum that was provided to us today by the executive officer of the Airport Land Use Commission staff, who has reviewed all the documentation that has been provided to her, including documentations of conversations with the Federal Aviation Administration, as well as her own conversation with the Federal Aviation Administration. And she believes that the intent of the condition has been met, and that was the information that was forwarded on to you this afternoon.
Okay, very good. Was there anything else in your note-taking that you felt we needed to clarify?
Well, I would like to just indicate that the general plan doesn't have 100 units that are available for consideration without going through a general plan amendment process. And there's sometimes confusion between the thresholds that are within the Charter Section 423 in terms of when an amendment to the general plan is considered major and requires a vote of the people. And so, as we indicated in our presentation earlier, one of the thresholds is 100 units. And within Newport Center, statistical area L1, there are currently 100 units in that statistical area that have not been used by previous general plan amendments. So if the city council were to approve this general plan amendment this afternoon or this evening, it would not require a vote because the 100 units would be equal to the threshold within that statistical area, and a vote would not be required. So it's not that there's 100 units available, it's just whether or not a vote is required. And I think that's a very important distinction.
Okay, and one other question, just to clarify, because this has been brought up numerous times on the conversion of the hotel units to residential units. Just want to address that.
Yes, so back in 2012, the city council approved the transfer of 79 unbuilt hotel units at the Marriott property in Newport Center to what's be called North Newport Center, which is where, which is the site of where the current villas at Bashan Island are being constructed. The general plan does allow transfer of development within statistical areas, and that occurred within statistical area L1, which encompasses all of Newport Center. So that information was presented to the city council in 2012. All the documentation supporting that conversion, the transfer and conversion from hotel units to residential units was provided at that time. And the city attorney may want to speak to this further, but the statute of limitations for challenging that decision have passed.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to comment on the legal aspects of that conversion?
No, I completely agree with Ms. Brandt. The 79 units that were referred to by Mr. Mosher did not require a general plan amendment. The transfer was contemplated by the general plan, and any opportunity to challenge that statute of limitations is clearly run on that.
Okay. Let's bring it back to the council. Mr. Selich, you're first up.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Your comments, whether you're opposed or in favor of this project, were certainly heartfelt and sincere, and myself, and I think the rest of the council appreciates hearing that. When I was elected to the city council, I told folks that we may not always agree, but I'd always explain my reasoning. And while you may not agree with my conclusion, at least you'd be able to follow my logic. So tonight, I'm going to take more time than I usually do in explaining how I arrived at my conclusion. I've spent a lot of time analyzing the project, and at the end of my remarks, I hope you'll follow my logic in this. Now, I was originally approached by Akma in the summer of 2014. They explained their plans to sell the museum-building property to a residential developer in order to rezone it, and Akma moved their facility to Costa Mesa. And I expressed my opposition to their plan at that time. I felt the property should remain an arts and cultural facility, even if Akma did not occupy it. I also felt that giving Akma a windfall profit and allowing them to take the money to Costa Mesa was not in the best interest of the residents of Newport Beach. I indicated I thought that Akma should sell the property to another arts and cultural organization and use those proceeds to move to Costa Mesa and would leave us with the arts and cultural facility here remaining. I feel strongly that Newport Center is an urban core, that it's now Newport Beach's downtown, and that maintaining an arts and cultural presence there is an imperative to keeping Newport Center a vibrant, multi-use area with commercial, office, residential, governmental facilities, parks, open space, and good circulation. However, if this project is not approved, Akma will still sell it to another party. They're moving to Costa Mesa one way or the other. We can't stop them. So what's going to happen? Well, first, my research has shown that there's no other arts and cultural institution that can afford to buy this property. Its value is just too high. These institutions are still struggling to survive the 2008 recession, and there's no indication that that situation's going to improve soon. So the other alternative is for Akma to sell it to a private party, who will then come to the city for a different general plan amendment, most likely for office or commercial, and the city will have no choice but to approve it. The zoning for this property is very restrictive, and a case may be able to be made for regulatory taking and deprivation of property rights if the city doesn't rezone it for a broader array of economically viable uses. Our general plan designates land for private institutional use only if it's already in a private ownership and used for private institutional use. We don't go out and designate land for this purpose in advance of it being used. So the end result is that we'll just end up with another office or commercial use in Newport Center and lose a significant arts and cultural use. So when Akma agreed to donate the old library property to the city as part of the development agreement, I decided, and borrowing a phrase from former President Reagan, that half a loaf is better than none. I certainly would prefer to maintain the entire property as an arts and cultural facility, but giving the alternative, having no facility at all, I think maintaining half of it for arts and culture use is preferable. Now, if the, and only if the proposed development plan is a good one, it's consistent with our general plan goals for Newport Center, it has minimal impacts to the community, and extends the quality of life for our residents, enhances the quality of life for our residents, I should say. So let me address these impacts, and I decided the way I was going to do this is I'm going to use the arguments that were sent to me by Line in the Sand and Spawn yesterday as the basis of responding. Spawn's first comment is, it's out of place, it's 25 stories, 290 feet tall, 100 units, and it's completely incompatible with the surrounding development and will stick out like a sore thumb. Well, this is the seventh high-rise building in Newport Center if it's built. It's not going to stick out like a sore thumb. It's just going to blend into the Newport Center skyline. I've driven around town and have viewed it from the harbor from all perspectives, and in my estimation, it's just going to blend in with the other high-rise buildings and enhance the skyline of Newport Beach. If there is any place in Newport Beach for high-rise structures, it's Newport Center. It's not going to destroy the beach city feeling that we have here. We're not going to build high-rises elsewhere in the city, and it's not Los Angelization. That's just a total disingenuous argument here. Newport Center is Newport Center. It already has high-rises in it. Spawn says it's too tall. No other developments in San Joaquin Plaza is even close to the proposed building height. Well, the building height in San Joaquin Plaza, which I think they mean where the apartments are being built, really isn't relevant. This structure is about midway between the Island Hotel high-rise structures and the Marriott high-rise towers, three structures, they're high-rise structures just surrounding this proposed building. Now, Spawn says it's not compliant. They say the high-rise height of 300 feet applies only to non-residential development. Therefore, the proposed residential project is not eligible for the high-rise height limit. Well, this is really a distortion of the height argument. Whether a building is residential or non-residential has no effect on the height. A 300-foot building is a 300-foot building. Now, Spawn says it's not allowed, that residential use of the site is not currently permitted and requires approval of amendment to the general plan, a zone change, and a green light vote. Well, the purpose of a general plan amendment is to consider revisions to the general plan. State planning guidelines say that general plans are living documents, subject to review and change, and they are not strict, unchangeable master plans. Spawn goes on to say that it sets a bad precedent. Granting approvals of these amendments sets a precedence for changing rather than respecting the city's governing land use plans set in place by the voter-approved 2006 general plan. Well, our staff in the staff report repeated Well, our staff in the staff report repeated what's stated on Pages 1-14 of the adopted general plan, which says it's intended to be a dynamic document, must be periodically updated to respond to changing community needs. Goes on to say that requests for amendments may be submitted by individuals or initiated by the city itself. And most enlightening, in the voter-approved general plan, it says most amendments propose a change in land use designation for a particular property, and that's exactly what is being done here. Now, Spawn also goes on to say it's inconsistent with the general plan, that the project's 100 residential units are inconsistent with the general plan, since Newport Center has no residential units remaining, and is in fact already 79 units over the allocated limit in 2006. Again, this just isn't true. The adopted general plan goal for Newport Center, you can look it up, it's LU 6.14, states that the goal for Newport Center is a successful mixed-use district that integrates economic and commercial centers, serving the needs of Newport Beach residents in the subregion. Again, our staff explained this in their report. And it also has expanded opportunities for residents to live close to jobs, commerce, entertainment, recreation, and is supported by a pedestrian-friendly environment. Now, the 79-unit argument, our staff just went over it again. It's been debunked, I don't know how many times. We've got professional planners and legal opinions that say that it's not 79 units over the voter-approved general plan, and I think the people that keep making that argument ought to just get over it and accept the fact that there are 100 units left under the green-light allocations to be used in the statistical area. Now, looking further, Spawn says it's too much noise and traffic over too long a period. The proposed project would result in a significant construction noise and traffic impact to new residents of, at Newport Villas, I suppose that's what they refer to as San Joaquin Plaza, the colony residents and adjacent businesses for two years. Well, the mitigation measures in the EIR have taken care of this. We do have one that could not be fully mitigated, but we certainly put measures in there to address it. And I have to say, we hear this argument all the time, and for example, we heard the same argument for the Erie project in Corona del Mar from the people that were opposed to that. And it has similar mitigation measures. As far as I know, there's not been one complaint on the noise or traffic from the excavation and construction of Erie, and in fact, I have received compliments from several residents on how well that project has proceeded. Now, Spawn continues to say it's irreversible. The project would convert private institutional use to residential use, preventing another cultural or institutional use from using the site after the departure of Akma. As I stated previously, Akma's moving, and we can't make them stay. Denial of this project will not guarantee that the property remains a cultural or institutional use. Spawn also says it's just not right. Newport Beach should not be stuck with the condo tower that will forever change the look and feel of the heart of our town, so that the museum can fund the next chapter of its history. Significant sources of private funding are available, and this solution is a lose-lose proposition for Newport residents. Why disagree with that? One more high-rise will not change the look and the feel of Newport Center. Just isn't logical. All we have to do is take a look at some of the renderings we had there. One more high-rise is not going to make a difference. This compromise will benefit Newport Beach residents far more by preserving an arts and cultural site in Newport Center than having it sold to another developer to just build another office or commercial use in Newport Center. Now, they go on to say that the Museum House residential project requires planning commissioners and council members, who are tasked to enforce our voter-approved general plan, to authorize a major general plan amendment and zoning code change for this project to proceed, resulting in an end-run around the zoning process that puts limits on size and bulk. That's just almost a silly statement. This is not an end-run. This is the process. It's a process called for in the general plan, and the height is already permitted. So the only thing that's already, we're talking about here is the zoning change going from private institutional to a residential use. Finally, they say, "Our town has reached the tipping point with regard to out-of-character massive developments such as this project. Your vote determines whether Newport Beach will look like Laguna Beach or like Miami." Well, to me, the tipping point argument just doesn't hold water. If there ever was a tipping point argument, it was when the first of the existing high-rise towers was approved many years ago. Up to that point, the character of Newport Center was all lower-rise buildings, and once that happened, it changed forever. And it should be pointed out, and I think it was pointed out in the applicant's presentation, that high-rise structures were always anticipated in Newport Center, going back to the earliest plans in the 1960s. And I've seen the photographs of those planning studies and the models, and they show a plethora of high-rise structures in Newport Center. So this project has no long-term environmental impacts. The short-term impacts have been mitigated, again, except for the construction noise, but we do have additional measures in there to deal with that. There are absolutely no traffic impacts, as stated by the traffic expert. Just because people think there are going to be traffic impacts doesn't make it so. We have experts that are independent to do this kind of analysis, and they just don't come up with their conclusions willy-nilly. They use facts and quantitative analysis to come to their conclusions. And I'll go even further, maybe going out on a limb here, but I think the EIR overstates the real-world impacts of the traffic, because many of these units are going to be held for part-time residents. Now, there's no adverse water impacts, that's been taken care of in the EIR. In fact, this project will be at the forefront of water conservation. There are no view-blocking or shadowing impacts, that's been shown in the EIR, and I've gone out and validated that personally. And one thing I have to say, the project is a quality-designed building and a quality-designed site plan that's going to set a new quality standard in Newport Center. The highest-quality materials will be used. There's a need for this type of housing in Newport Beach, as some of our speakers have indicated tonight. There's many people that want to downsize, and they'd like to have a luxury and lock-and-go home. They can lock the place up, go travel, do whatever they want, and come back to their home in Newport Beach. Now, additional housing in Newport Center is going to contribute to meeting our regional housing needs assessment numbers. Now, we might not like it that a regional agency demands that we build new housing, but it's the law, and we have to follow it. So we have to do new housing. Now, beyond the donation of the old library site, there is a public, there is a development agreement which provides a public benefit fee of $7.1 million. We're also going to get about $2.6 million in park fees. It will provide another property that has high value that will generate significant property taxes, which go well beyond the cost to provide municipal services to this building. Now, for the 10 years that I was on the planning commission, and now 11 and 1/2 years on the city council, I have been a proponent of good community planning. As a planning commissioner, I had the luxury of opining on projects for their land use and design characteristics. However, once I became a council member, there was a higher standard that I had to follow, because I had to consider the financial impacts of projects, and this took on a higher priority in my analysis, because we have a municipal corporation to run here. So balancing quality-of-life factors with financial impacts took on a greater importance. Projects that came with the substantial community benefits took on a greater significance. However, I have never voted for a project on its financial benefits alone. Each project has had to meet a high standard. I have never been shy about turning down a project if it did not meet these standards. This was evidenced recently when I led the city council on voting to turn down the 350-unit project in the airport area, because it did not meet these high standards. Now, I've received many comments via letters, emails, phone calls, and personal conversations from residents on this project. I really don't pay too much attention to whether it's the developers' petitions or the other petition going around, because I don't know the criteria that they were garnered under. So I go on my communications with my constituents, with people I talk to, the people that contact me. Now, I can't say that I've received an overwhelming majority either way on this project. It seems to be about 50/50 on what's come to me, just about evenly divided. So it's my job as a city councilman to use my judgment, my discretion, on what is best for the overall benefit of the city. So I have concluded, it's a well-designed, quality project that any city would be proud to have. It fits within the character of Newport Center, has no adverse environmental impacts that have not been mitigated. It will contribute to the financial health of the city through its property tax revenues and development agreement, public benefit contributions. It will preserve an arts and cultural presence in the city, which otherwise may be lost for a generation or two. And as was stated earlier, in accordance with the development agreement, Akma's going to stay five years as a transition period. It will give the city five years to vision what the arts and cultural center should be, what the city's role in it should be, and how it should be funded. After five years, the city can take it over as an arts and cultural center. It may be initially adapting the existing building. If the community and the city council desires, it may ultimately be completely rebuilt as a totally new facility if funding is secured. The Arts Commission can spearhead a community visioning process to determine what it should be. These arts and cultural centers can take many forms, and should be one that reflects the character of this city and the desire of its residents. The Arts Commission can facilitate the raising of funds from the community, similar to how it was done for the Central Library. And the city council will have to determine the level of city financial support for the arts and cultural center. Once all this is completed, there will be a community vision as to what it should be, both short and long term, how the level of funding, how it will be secured, and whether the building will be used as it is or transitioned into a new facility. So at the end of this process, we will truly have a facility created for the community by the community. And in summary, this project will enhance and not degrade the quality of life for Newport Beach residents. So, Madam Mayor, for these reasons, I'm going to make two motions here. First, I'm going to move that we adopt Resolution 2016-126, that's Item 1B on our agenda, and if I get a second to that, I'll move on to my second motion.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, so I'll move on to my second motion, which is that I move that we approve Items 1C through 1H, which is adopting Resolution 2016-127, introduce ordinance 2016-23, adopt resolution 2016-128, adopt resolution 2016-129, adopt resolution 2016-130, and introduce ordinance 2016-24. Now, along with that, before I ask for a second, I have requested some amendments to the Resolution 2016-127, and I'd like the Community Development Director to recite those amendments right now.
Yes, if I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you may, please do.
So pursuant to Councilmember Selig's request, we prepared an alternative resolution that would incorporate and attach the following information. The April 7, 2016 Planning Commission Minutes, the September 1, 2016 Planning Commission Minutes, the October 20, 2016 Planning Commission Minutes, Planning Commission Resolution Number 202033, let me repeat that, Number 2033, a listing of 11 zoning districts, Charter Section 423 Tracking Table for Statistical Area L1, the amended land use element, EIR State Clearinghouse Number 2016-021-023, which includes the Notice of Preparation, Initial Study, Environmental Analysis, Alternative Analysis, Appendices, Responses to Comments, and Revisions to the Draft EIR. Also, the resolution has been modified in Section 7, which is on Page 43 of your staff report, to add the last sentence to Section 7, which I will read. "The city council has reviewed the EIR and determined that no significant new information has been added to the EIR. Therefore, recirculation is not required pursuant to Secua Guidelines, Section 15088.5."
Before I ask for a second on this, let me follow up with, on my reasoning for asking for these additional exhibits. And it may add a lot of bulk to the petition, but I think there has been so much misrepresentation of the facts. And as someone said earlier in the public testimony, you're entitled to your opinions, but not to your facts. And so I think all of the factual documents need to be accompanied, need to be included with the, with any petition for a referendum, and that's why I'm adding it in there. I think that anyone that signs this petition should be able to look and see over the facts before they sign the petition, and it should be accompanying each petition. And everyone's always coming here asking for transparency. Well, this is the ultimate in transparency, because you're going to have to show everything. So with that, I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, very complete comments. Mr. Piotr.
I'm not going to go over the comments that Mr. Selig has, although I agree wholeheartedly with almost every one of those. I'm going to talk more along the lines of process. You know, we have green light that we're all living under. Green light's ballot box planning. I don't agree with ballot box planning. Our staff report for tonight's, tonight's agenda was 544 pages, and to expect voters to go through 544 pages to vote on a project seems like a bad idea, no matter what the project is. But that's the law of the land. The Museum House is, I think, it's in accordance with green light. And as you recall, we had green light as it passed, some people call it green light 1. We had the general plan 2006 amendment that further refined and cleaned up some of the things in the general plan, including some of the green light items, and that was overwhelmingly supported and approved by the voters. People don't remember that there was a green light 2 on that same ballot in 2006. It failed by about 45/55. So green light sets out these rules, which we've heard ad nauseam as far as how the Museum House complies. It meets those rules. Now, apparently, a lot of the advocates of green light, such as the Skinners, don't like the rules. They want to change them. You know, it's like going to a football game and deciding, "We're going to move the end zone an extra 20 yards back for you, because, you know, we don't really like you." And that's not the role of the government. The role of government is to provide that level playing field and an expectation that everybody's going to be treated fair and equal. To change the rules midstream is just inappropriate. And, you know, it's a matter of, you know, hey, if you don't like it, you have the right of a referendum. I don't have a problem with that. But the attitude of, "We want to change the rules, and we don't care what you say," and, you know, tough beans, I don't care for that either. Measure Y was brought up several times. I supported Measure Y in 2014 when I ran for election. Measure Y was proposed by the previous council. They did an extensive EIR for it. They showed that there was no new development proposed for the city, but there was a significant amount of development that was proposed to be relocated from Pelican Hills, mostly, to Newport Center. The EIR addressed how that additional impact of the 100,000 square foot of commercial space and the 100, I believe it was 100 dwelling units at that time, maybe 500 dwelling units. I'm sorry, I got the numbers maybe wrong. But how that traffic was going to be addressed. The citizens voted on it. I don't have a problem respecting their decision. Although I'm a little surprised, we've got this great turnout tonight, which I really appreciate. Thank you very much for all of you coming down. Last week, this council had an item on their agenda to extend the development agreement with the Irvine Company for all of those hotel units that Measure Y dealt with down in Pelican Hills. Except for maybe Mr. Mosher, nobody showed up. Nobody commented on all of the development rights that the Irvine Company had per the development agreement that was part of what Measure Y was all about. Nobody showed up. Now, the council didn't extend it, which was good. I applaud that we stopped that, and I think that was a positive response to the voters in Measure Y. That doesn't apply in this situation. We're not adding development rights that are not already allowed under green light in this, well, in Newport Center. You know, some people are saying that, hey, you should do what people want. And like Mr. Selig said, you know, we've got a lot of people saying for, we've got some people saying against, and it has been pretty even. And if you could do like Mr. Baker did and go through and decipher all the people, and whether they're Irvine, Newport, I got to be honest with you, I didn't do that. You know, if they were honest, and they put their city on the email, I noted it, but I didn't sit there and do a running tally and do a check on the voter list to see who was on either side or for whatever. But that's beside the point. We were elected to represent the people, and, you know, if a majority of people came here tonight and said, "Susan Skinner's not allowed to live in this city," and we said, "Well, you know, hey, all these people show up, we're not allowed to do it." Should we deny her the right to live here? No. As many people might agree and say she shouldn't live here, I'd be the first to stand up and say, "That's not right. It's not going to happen, and it's not part of what government does." And so, you know, we've got this project, it complies with green light, and for all of the reasons that Mr. Selig went over, this is a good development. It's a quality development. It's a quality development. It's not like, and I hate to say, either the PIMCO Tower or the Irvine Company Tower, which are much, much higher than the predominant line of development around it. This is at or below that predominant line of development, and it doesn't stick up 300 feet from the highest point of Fashion Island. It sticks up from 300 feet on almost one of the lowest points of Fashion Island. When I was on the Planning Commission, I was against the way that this property was zoned. This was part of the implementation of the 2006 General Plan Amendment, and this zoning was specifically included as being institutional zoning. I think, and that happened throughout the city, even churches, and as we saw at the last meeting, I know not very many of you were here, but on Riverside Avenue, we had a zoning for the post office. The post office left town, and the property owner's sitting there with a property zoned institutional or government when there's no government use there anymore. So having a more flexible zoning is what I pushed for when I was on the Planning Commission, for this property and other properties, like the Riverside property, where it might have an overlay of an institutional use, but it would be basically a multi-use zone, just like everything else around this property. And had that been done, we might not need the General Plan Zone Change, at least for the use part of this project. So just because you've got a General Plan or a Zone Change requirement on this doesn't necessarily mean that, as Mr. Selig pointed out, that we shouldn't be able to adjust and put the best and highest use on this property. There are many other positive reasons to do this, this project, and I applaud the developer for pursuing it at incredible opposition and incredible costs, and I would advocate anybody watching this thing, read all thousand pages of this transparent document that they're going to have with the petition, because my experience with SPON is, they don't tell the truth. They flat-out do not tell the truth, as Mr. Selig has indicated on several items of this. I'm disappointed in it, but I can't control it. So I appreciate the time and the input, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Madam Mayor Pro Tim Muldoon.
Thank you. One of my favorite law professors is here this evening, Professor Bob Curry, and I know he would chastise me later for failing to offer applicant their proper customary opportunity to rebuttal. So at this time, I just want to see if Related wants to rebuttal on the points that were made, and if not, I just defer to the staff.
The temptation is great in front of a mic to take it, but I think I'll pass on the opportunity, but thank you.
Any other comment?
I might just say, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but a lot of the points I would make are being made, so I don't want to be redundant. The only other comment I would make is, just to get personal for a moment and not technical, is, as I think so many have pointed out, there were a lot of genuine arguments made on both sides, and I can respect that. I've met several times with SPON and others, and I think we've been as open and candid on both sides, at least certainly speaking from us as we can. I do take issue with the avalanche of mailers, some of which are from points unknown, some of which are points known, that are flat-out lies and innuendo, and I think that's unfortunate. I respect people who genuinely disagree with us. The only other point I would make is that, as I've said to Ms. Skinner and others, reasonable people can disagree. It's possible to actually believe different things. You're not necessarily just a shill for developers, if you agree for developers, nor are you on the other side. It really is possible, and I hope we can have a continued dialogue in that spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Petros?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to apologize to all of you for the racket I've been making over here. Clearly, I'm feeling under the weather tonight, but I did make it out. Second, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. This is a huge burden on you to come down and make yourself known, but please know that I, for one, genuinely appreciate each and every one of you who spoke, because this is representative government, and I am grateful for that, so thank you. Coming back to some comments that were made, I'm not clear what Mr. Piattar's comments were there, but I would just invite you to come down to the heights. The post office didn't leave town. They're still there, so come and post your mail. They're right behind the existing facility. I want to, coming back to the project, say that I am delighted that the Related company is involved in this project. They are one of California, the United States' prominent developers. Robert Stern is one of the highest-quality architects in the nation. The process that has been undertaken, I think, has been of the highest order, and I think we can all be proud of the efforts that have gone out there. I would support this project, but I also, more so, support representative government. And while some have tried to sweep under the rug this notion of the Measure Y vote, I would just like to give you my two cents on this matter. Two years ago, there was a vote taken, and that vote brought in the team Newport folks on the council, and as part of that vote, 70% of you, 70% of the voting public of Newport Beach, decided that intensified development in Newport Center was not in the vision and the interest of the city. 70% of you said no to bringing over that level of intensity from the coast here. There comes a point when I, your elected official, have to bend to the will of the people. I'm up here supposedly representing you, and a lot of times I have to adjudicate and find where the common ground is. And many times, you might not like the decisions that I make. Mr. Selig has brought that point out. You might not agree with me, but there comes a tipping point, we keep talking about this tipping point, where I have to put myself aside and really represent those that put me here. And when you say that 70% of the voting public said no, I hear you. And as much as I like the shiny object that's before me, as much as I agree that there will not be a significant environmental impact to this project, as much as I think the architecture is beautiful, and as much as I admire the work the Related company does, I have to say, my personal opinion in this has to be subordinated to the will of the people. And therefore, while I will support your initial motion, Mr. Selig, I just can't support the project.
Mr. Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and like Mr. Selig, I have just some briefly extended comments to make. I would first begin by observing, I don't think in my time on the council, there's ever been a project where I've had so many good friends speaking on either side, both sides, of the issue, which gives me the confidence that I will leave office having upset absolutely everybody, whoever supported me in this job. But let me say more seriously that I think this entire project, it's been profoundly disappointing. From the beginning, the project was marked with behind-the-scenes lobbying by Dave Ellis and a lack of transparency as to who was working on it. I called for public disclosure of this, and this process tonight demonstrates why that was important to do. And it's also ironic to note that the backroom lobbying generated a counter effort by the project opponents, targeting several of my colleagues, including the mayor, the mayor pro Tim, and in the media, and the financial backers of that effort are also anonymous and not disclosed. And I think that's wrong on both counts. Now typically, the mayor or a council member would work to bring the parties together to address legitimate community concerns and produce a compromise project that reduced objections. That process did not take place here, and in fairness to the applicant, it's not clear there was a party willing to negotiate and produce an acceptable project, so there was no compromise in the size and the impact of the project to be had. Now, I have read the documents, the emails, and listened to the testimony, and there are good arguments on both sides of this debate. On one side, we should not capriciously change our general plan, and many in the community believe, I think legitimately, that we've reached a tipping point on growth and development. And clearly, the voter message of 2014's Measure Y needs to be heard and respected. On the other hand, this project brings one of the nation's most distinguished architects and developers to our city. It is a project that will result in over $22 million in public benefits, over $18 million in new tax revenue over the next 30 years. And I also believe that this project will enable an even better Orange County Museum of Art in Costa Mesa, while allowing a more Newport-centric arts facility to be developed on-site here. And I take great comfort in the involvement of the Segerson family in creating this new and exciting facility, and I believe that we should support this effort. In the end, I believe the advantages of this project outweigh the bad, and I will support it. However, I fully understand how divisive this project is, and I do so with the understanding that the residents will launch a referendum campaign to give the voters the ability to vote on it. I frankly wish we, as a council, would just put it on the ballot directly, but I don't think we have the votes to do that. Now, while reasonable people can disagree about the merits of the project, all of us must support and defend the constitutional rights provided to all Californians for initiative, referendum, and recall. It is these sacred rights that gave us Proposition 13, and they are the bedrock of our power as voters to prevent government excess and abuse. Now, in order to protect the rights of our residents and to exercise their referendum rights, we need to remove Section 7 from the adopting resolution. This unnecessary provision incorporates the EIR into the ordinance and requires petitions to include the language of the full EIR. The petitions will be several thousand pages long instead of 50 to 75 pages, as it now is. So think about this. The petition will look like a telephone book that people are being asked in a 30-day period over the Christmas holidays to sign. And this, most recently, with Mr. Selig's motion, we're adding the minutes, the minutes of the Planning Commission to be part of that, to be incorporated in that, to be carried around. And that is nothing more than an effort to subvent the people's right to petition their government. And it, my friends, is wrong. Now, this is a clear subvention of rights of the people, and it's a cynical backroom way to eliminate the legitimate backroom rights of the public to petition their government. It's not necessary, and when I get to my right to vote for this project, I likely vote for it, but it should be a straight-up vote. You can be for this project, you can be against this project, but win fairly. Don't win by cheating. Whether we agree or disagree on the merits, we must all agree that the rights of the people to the initiative, referendum, and recall must be preserved and protected. To do otherwise demonstrates the heights of contempt for the voters, a contempt and abuse of power, and a subversion of our constitutional rights. It is our rules to make decisions that are sometimes unpopular. We have certainly demonstrated that here sometimes, but we should never limit the rights of the people to exercise final judgment over those decisions. So, Madam Mayor, I understand you have a series of amendments, and when we get to amendments, I'll offer some that will strike this language so we can get to a more, I believe, appropriate resolution for adoption. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that, I think, I didn't want to say this, but I will. Dave Ellis does not call me and tell me how to vote, okay? Ever. And he never will. So I take a little offense at that, that I'm being a puppet of Dave Ellis. I'm not. I'm not a politician either. I'm not, he got me elected, but I'm not sure I'm too happy about that. I'm working for you guys. I want to do it. I'm serious about this, but it's a hard job. But it doesn't come with a guy calling me on the phone telling me what to do. That's ridiculous. So I've been torn over this project because my mother was one of the 13 founding women of the Newport Beach Art Museum in 1962. I was 10 years old then, and I remember her taking me to the pavilion and showing my sisters and I her work. I really have a hard time with the museum moving to Costa Mesa. I know my mom and her friends would, too. I also have a hard time with this idea that the current operators of the museum get to make a ton of money for something that was donated to them. However, it would be fiscally irresponsible for me to vote against this development. This project offers a great deal of positive financial impact, and I believe has minimal impact to the existing area. I also firmly believe in the Planning Commission's unanimous approval and the work of our staff. Therefore, I will be voting in favor of the project.
Okay, I think it comes to me as the final speaker, I believe, and because of the late hour, I'm not going to be repeating many of the excellent comments that have been made this evening, but first of all, I want to thank Mr. Selig for his thoughtful comments and explanation of a lot of the philosophy behind our planning process and principles. I think that was extremely valuable and useful this evening. I also, first of all, want to thank everyone who has taken the time to write letters to the council, as well as appear tonight to express their opinions. We've received many letters, petitions, and phone calls on this issue because it is so important to our community. Clearly, people care about our community, and although they differ in their opinions about development, clearly, our discussion this evening reflects a wide spectrum of opinion. And once again, I'll echo what others have said, reasonable people can disagree, but yet remain reasonable. But I want to thank you for your attendance and patience here tonight. My role as a member of the City Council and mayor is to represent all of the people of Newport Beach, all 87,000 people, of which there were a few thousand people represented tonight here in person or by petition, so not the entire population of the city of Newport Beach have we heard from. And my job is to do what is best to advance the best overall interests of the city. I support this project. I believe the community benefits are significant, meritorious, and reflect sound and visionary planning for our community's future. There is no doubt in my mind that this project will contribute to the city's beauty and architectural excellence and provide benefits for the entire community for years to come. The project architect, Mr. Stern, who was introduced earlier, is a world known to all of us as a world-renowned architect, and I am confident this building will become a centerpiece of Newport Beach, which will bring pride to our community. I encourage all of you to go to RAMSA's website, R-A-M-S-A's website, and you will be, I'm sure, as impressed as I was, to see the magnificent buildings and residences that have been built with a sense of traditional classic design and excellence in materials. It's very impressive. I believe the General Plan Amendment to permit 100 residential units will have minimum impact in the community that we've heard this evening. I believe the community benefits of this proposal are several. Number one, the adherence to quality land use planning principles, as you've heard Mr. Selig describe, adherence to quality architecture, adherence to the highest and world-class standards in building design, materials, and amenities, adherence to community needs now and in the future, adherence to General Plan requirements in terms of height, density, and traffic impacts. The direct financial benefits to our community beyond the required permit fees are significant as well, including the $7.1 million in community benefit contribution and a donation of the .9-acre adjacent site for arts and cultural purposes. That is going to remain as currently designated. The property is intended to be donated to the city, although the final agreement has not yet been finalized, but that is clearly my commitment. I fully support Mr. Selig's concept, and those who have spoken of this for an Arts and Culture Center on this site. I support allocating $2 million of the $7.1 million community benefit fee to be reserved for funding this goal, as was requested earlier by one of the members of the Arts Commission, and I appreciate the support of my fellow council members in this regard in the future. Additionally, I support exploring other site options in Newport Center to maximize square footage for arts and culture via a General Plan Amendment to replace and replenish what is being amended in this proposal. So net-net, I hope we end up at the same amount of square footage. As has been discussed this evening about the kind of the bittersweet issues related to AKMA and their move, while it's perhaps not a pleasant realization for the community to absorb that the museum is leaving this site, the AKMA Board of Trustees independently determined that this site is not a desired location for attracting large numbers of visitors and ultimately donors to their museum. The site simply may not be ideal for a museum as that size, as it has struggled to gain visitors since its inception over 25 years ago. The museum board decided to sell this property and relocate to another community in order to attract larger number of visitors and prospective donors. While we may not like this fact, it is legally their property to do with as they wish. This may not bode well for using the site for another public or private institution, as Mr. Selig referenced in his comments. If the museum remains on this site, it continues to decline. If the museum remains on this site, it continues to decline for lack of interest and lack of community support. There is no other private entity that I'm aware of that is waiting in the wings to acquire this site to build a new museum. This site may not be a viable site for a public institution of this size. So, it's just a matter of time that it either sits fallow and wastes away, or a new development, commercial development comes in, so we will be faced with something perhaps that's less desirable as we are facing now. A few comments concerning the general plan. As Mr. Selich has said, the general plans may be amended through the legislative process. Circumstances and property uses certainly change. For example, last week, the council approved the land use amendment on Riverside Drive, changing the designation from its public institutional use as a post office to private, mixed-use, commercial, residential. Land uses and sitting patterns, city patterns change over time, and the legislative process allows for this. The process that led to the general plan that was approved by voters in 2006 actually began several years earlier than 2006. So, our city's general plan, which is now probably 13, 15, 16 years old in terms of reflecting the desires and the issues at hand in terms of envisioning the future, our city's general plan needs to reflect an updated vision for the future, allowing for changes in community needs that have occurred over this past decade and more. Let me address the Measure Y issue. While I, too, did vote for it, I did go back and look into the provisions of Measure Y. I just want to remind all of us what was defeated in 2014. The Museum House proposal is not, I repeat, it is not Measure Y. The proposal tonight is to add 100 dwelling units to Newport Center. That's it. A fraction of what would have been permitted under Measure Y. So, to refresh our memories, Measure Y was to amend the general plan to add 500 dwelling units, 500,000 square feet of regional office, and 50,000 square feet of regional commercial to Newport Center. And as Mr. Piotta mentioned, last week, this council allowed to, we took no action, to extend the proposed extension of the development agreement for Newport Coast, which was the original entitlement rights to be transferred to Newport Center. So, that process is beginning, that that development agreement is not going to be renewed. So, just to reiterate, Museum House, 100 units, significantly not Measure Y. And I respect the will of the people and their desire, and I think this project reflects a significantly reduced development project. The two, Museum House and Measure Y, apples and oranges, not even comparable in terms of the development. It is my intent to help the community to fully understand the relationship between quality development and our quality of life. Our community's many amenities that contribute to our steadily rising property values are the direct result of decades of public and private investment in our community. The benefits we continue to derive from past private developments are many and still exist. We have about, I think we have precisely 64 parks within our city boundaries. I understand that all 64 were funded with proceeds from development agreements. Residents, none of us, pay any special taxes or fees to fund the design and construction of these community projects. I believe we are so very fortunate as a city. Private investments, conservative, thoughtfully planned, and executed to world-class standards, protect and enhance our rising property values in this city. To illustrate some public facilities funded in the recent past by development agreements, just for a refresher, I have slide number one. Marina Park, Oneida Canyon Park, Sunset Ridge Park, Oasis Senior Center, and Castaways Park. I don't know if the slide got up there. Is it coming? Is it there? Well, okay. All right. That's been done, as we all know. Slide number two, and in the future, on the drawing boards, planning is underway to rebuild the Lito Fire Station, the Corona del Mar Fire Station and Library, Mariners' Fire Station Expansion, Sunset View Park with pedestrian bridges. These capital projects will be funded from prior and diminishing development agreement funds that will be gone in the next few years. And finally, to add to the community benefits included in tonight's proposal, I have a proposed amendment to Mr. Selich's motion to add an additional $4 million in public benefits to fund the following community projects. So, this is slide number three. And this has not been discussed, and this will be discussed with Mr. Witty from the related companies momentarily. So, an additional $4 million, I want to be, I propose to be allocated, $1 million for a much-needed junior lifeguard headquarters to replace the 20-year-old trailers, mobile home is too nice a word, trailers, at Peninsula Park, $1 million for the soon-to-be-proposed Central Library Lecture Hall, to be funded primarily through private donations, and $2 million for the West Newport Coast Highway Landscaping Project that has been deferred now for at least three years because of other budget priorities, and Mr. Petros was one of his favorite projects and would like to, I promised Mr. Petros that we would not forget that project. And I am delighted to include that in this additional $4 million in public benefits. So, combined with the previously mentioned $7.1 million in public benefits, a grand total of $11.1 million of investment in our community will be available to the entire community. These projects, these new projects I just mentioned, are not currently funded nor likely to be funded, although they've been on a wish list for years under current or future budgetary circumstances. This, combined with the state-required in-Lu Park fees, makes for a total community benefit of a minimum of $22.9 million, including the .9-acre site equivalent value of $8.9 million. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Witty if you would please come forward to comment on my proposed amendment for an additional $4 million in community benefits.
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I mean, no developer, you know, likes to be asked to contribute more money. The only thing I would say is the direction of using funds for specified public uses, if it's going to happen, it's clearly your prerogative. It's not for us to say, but we strongly endorse that approach. Rather than just paying money, if the money's going to be paid and it just kind of generally goes to the city, the public doesn't know, and frankly, we don't know. So, if it's going to be paid, which is your prerogative, and we're not going to stand in your way, we would certainly endorse that it go to specific projects.
Thank you very much. So, therefore, I am proposing now a friendly amendment to Mr. Selich's motion as follows. I would like to amend the motion by amending Section 3, Public Benefits, subsection 3.1, public benefit fee of the development agreement as follows. Increase the $71,100 per residential unit public benefit by $40,000 per residential unit, for a total of $111,100 per residential dwelling unit, or for a total of $11,110,000 for the project's 100 dwelling units. Also, I would like to add a new paragraph to the end of subsection 3.1 to say, "The public benefit fees shall be allocated as follows. $5.1 million shall go to the facility's financing plan for future capital projects that have been targeted. $2 million shall go to the donation parcel for it, for to adopt it for the arts and cultural purposes. $1 million towards a new lifeguard, junior lifeguard facility. $2 million towards the West Newport Landscaping Project on Coast Highway. And $1 million towards a new lecture hall for the Central Library." Mr. Selich, is this amendment acceptable?
Yes, Mayor, it is.
Therefore, I can support Mr. Selich's amended motion and this project, and see no other requests to speak. Oh, Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. Almost had it there. For the record, I would offer an amendment for discussion that would strike the requirement in Section 7 of the resolution that the EIR be incorporated, as well as the additional documents that Mr. Selich proposed to incorporate, including the minutes at all, in his motion, that those not be included in the ordinance, so that the ordinance itself may be considered independently by a referendum. All of us here support the measure, all of us here support the project, but I think it's very important that we not tamper with the fundamental rights of the people to fairly undertake the referendum process, which is what we would be doing if we were to sort of Christmas tree this with all of these other documents. So, that would be my motion, Madam Mayor.
So, is that a substitute motion?
No, no, it's an amendment.
So, let me just clarify things real quickly. So, Councilmember Selich basically accepted your changes to his motion, but that didn't get a second yet. So, does the person who seconded the motion initially, did they accept that as well?
You're talking about...
Councilmember Piotta.
The mayor's amendments? I'll second it for discussion, but I have some concerns about them.
Okay. And then, your motion would be a substitute motion as opposed to an amendment.
No, he can do it as an amendment.
I'll do it as an amendment, so we can vote on it separately.
You do it as an amendment if you vote on it separately.
Yeah, that's what I want to do. That's my motion.
Okay. And what process do we want to hear your comments on?
Well, he's got a motion on the floor and needs to be seconded. If there's no second, I'll go ahead with discussion.
Okay. So, we deal with the amendment first.
I would just speak in favor of the amendment by saying, and particularly for those of you who are supportive of the project, I support the project. But if we go down the slippery slope of saying that we're going to subvert the people's right to go to the ballot with measures, you don't know what project's going to come next. It could be a project that you are supportive, but to require that the petitioners carry along a petition that includes the minutes from the Planning Commission and includes a, you know, 1,000-page EIR is simply designed to put our fingers on the scales of democracy in a way that is fundamentally unfair, fundamentally undemocratic, fundamentally in violation of the oaths that we took to uphold the Constitution of the State of California. That's a much bigger issue, frankly, than whether this building is approved or not. It's a building as to whether or not we are going to stand up and support democratic government in Newport Beach.
Okay. Mr. Amir Potem, Muldoon.
Thank you. The EIR is the most important aspect of this. It's the most likely misrepresented documentation and factual background, and I believe it's going to be the gospel of this. But I do think maybe we could consider removing the minutes or some aspects, so it's not overly burdensome on the petitioner. So, that would be my position if we could come to an agreeance here. I think the spirit of what Mr. Curry is saying is correct, but I think it's also important that the EIR information be included.
Mr. Piotta.
I agree with Mr. Muldoon. I think SPA has already said, has already indicated that they don't have any problems lying based on their information that they're putting out, or as Mr. Selich more politely put it, that they're misrepresenting the truth, and frankly, you're not allowed to your own set of facts. I'm okay with Mr. Muldoon's suggestion of getting rid of the minutes, but the other items that Mr. Selich wanted to add, I think, aid in transparency and make sure that the facts are out there. Obviously, we can't be out there with the petitioners making sure that they represent them properly, but at least the documents will be there for petitioners to look at them if they want. So, I could support a reduced motion by Mr. Curry in accordance with what Mr. Muldoon said, but I don't want to remove the documents entirely.
All right. So, do we do a vote on Mr. Curry's amendment? Are you willing to take an amendment? All right. So, let's do a vote on Mr. Curry's amendment. Is that right?
I think we probably just want to clarify exactly what your amendment was one more time, just to make sure that everybody knows.
My amendment is to strike the requirement in Section 7 that the EIR be incorporated into the ordinance and to delete all of the other documents that were proposed to be incorporated in the ordinance in Mr. Selich's motion.
So, just for clarification, so you're not interested in accepting my changes?
I don't think, Kevin, it actually does any good if it's, you know, 1,500 pages or 1,000 pages. I think putting the EIR in is designed to be a poison pill to counteract and circumvent the initiative process, and I think it's, they're all heinous to do.
I understand, I respect that. I still have the concern that the EIR is independent document, so...
You can offer another motion after we vote on this one, maybe.
Okay.
All right. Let's...
So, all you're voting for is on the amendment that Keith is making to the motion?
Correct. Yes.
Motion fails, 2 to 5.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'll accept if Councilmember Muldoon or Piotta want to suggest amendment to my motion to delete the minutes. I would be willing to accept that.
I'm happy to make that part of the motion as a second, to remove the minutes.
All right. Shall we, any comments on that?
I have other discussion on your proposed amendments, though, Madam Mayor. I don't have a problem that developers agreed to, I mean, you're extorting, extracting, and basically holding the developer over the barrel for the extra $4 million bucks. The developer seems to be in agreement to it, there's a significant public benefit to it. What I do mind on is that you're prescribing what those $4 million should be used for without really a lot of discussion. And there are a lot of other financial priorities amongst the city. You know, the harbor comes to mind as being neglected for 40 years, and none of that is tagged for it. I would prefer to see the council have the flexibility of allocating the $4 million the way they see fit. I also believe that if you wanted to put in a clause there, that there should be some direct nexus to the residence of this museum tower, but to sit there and say it should be prescribed for these other projects, I have a problem with. So, I would request that the designation of where the $4 million go be removed.
I say let's vote on it.
Yeah. Mr. Piotta, why don't you make a motion similar to Councilmember Curry's, and then we can just vote on it.
Okay. I move to amend the existing motion to remove the required designations as proposed for the $4 million by the mayor.
All right. Any comments? Let's call for the...
Should we clarify the vote again?
Just for clarification, it wasn't just the $4 million, it was more than that as far as how it was allocated.
What are you speaking to? Just the $4 million of the additional?
I'm sorry. I thought her proposal was just the designation for the $4 million.
Yeah, it allocated more than the $4 million. And you have a total there, Dave?
I do. It was, according to Mayor Dixon, it was $5.1 million to the FFP, $2.0 million, $2.20 million to the parcel itself to improve the parcel, some type of arts facility, and then the million to the lifeguards, $2 million to West Newport Landscaping, $1 million to the lecture hall.
Yeah. The proposed modification to the amendment would to remove all of those designations. It would still obviously give the council their discretion to do whatever with the now $11 million and change, but I don't want to lock it into the development agreement and lock future councils into that, is the main reason I'd like to have that designation removed.
All right. So, shall we call for a vote?
So, just a question for you folks. Is this a vote on the entire project, too? Because it's a motion as amended?
No, I think this is just on the amendment, and Councilmember Duffield, he seconded it. Do you accept that, the change?
Yes.
All right. So, we're just voting on the amendment.
You're voting to remove the designations that you mentioned, Madam Mayor.
I have a question. Pardon me? Oh, you have a question?
Oh, Mr. Mayor Potem.
Thank you. With the designation staying in place, are we somehow obligated or contractually obligated to follow the exact terms, or can that be changed later?
I think it depends on how you wrote it up and the way it was presented this evening. It seems that they're allocated for the specific projects, and you would need to use those for those projects.
Mr. Harp, is it by resolution that a future council could change, or it's tied to this overall action?
Yeah, you'd have to amend the development agreement to change it once you make the specific allocations.
Which means the developer would have to agree with whatever those changes are.
That's correct.
Which he said he would much prefer to know where his money's going rather than leave it to the discretion of some future council.
The other thing you could do is you could say that the intent is to use it for these projects or something similar, and add, you know, kind of a catch-all that allows you some flexibility.
And I'm okay with that, as long as, as long as there's flexibility for... And I'm okay with that, as long as, as long as there's flexibility for the next council to make it.
Well, with this, well, I want to be clear that this is contained in the development agreement, and this is the proposed designated allocation of those funds.
Proposed designated, but I'm hearing that there would be a sentence in there that said, however, a future council could at its discretion make changes to those.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Curry?
That would be an all okay language for me as well.
Well, I want to make sure it's a strong priority.
I want to call the question.
You want to, okay.
Okay. So the substitute motion on the floor is just to remove all designations from the development agreement as far as how the money gets spent.
Okay. Okay, let's vote.
The motion fails, 3, 4.
Okay. So now we'll go back to the original motion.
Original motion.
Yeah. So one important thing to note, there were two original motions.
Correct. Yeah, the EIR first.
So do you want to take them together or take them separately?
Separate.
Separately?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So.
If the city clerk would mind just stating what the first motion is.
Regarding Resolution 2016-126, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, California, certifying environmental impact report number ER 2016-002, and approving the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the Museum House project located at 850 San Clemente Drive.
And the motion is to adopt it?
The EIR.
Yeah, and there are no other modifications to that, so we're just voting on that.
Right. Yes. Okay. Is there a second on that?
No, I had a second already.
Oh, that's right. Okay. I was here a second.
Mr. Pieter did, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Pieter did, okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Then the second motion that was made was basically items C through H, and there were some modifications to those, and so maybe we could recount or recap what those were. My understanding is that the motion as it stands now, it was to add all the documents that were listed by Councilmember Selich except for the minutes?
Correct.
Include an additional $4 million in public benefit, and then the designations of the funds as set forth by?
By Mayor Dixon.
Mayor Dixon.
Okay. Let's call for the vote.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this the EIR or is this the other motion?
You voted on the EIR.
Okay, because it was the project.
This is the project.
Already voted for me.
Okay.
Discussion on this, I can't support it with your, with your amendments in there, so I'm going to be voting no on this.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's vote.
Before I call the vote, I will read the ordinance by title. Ordinance number 2016-23, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting Plan, Community Development Plan, PC 2015-001, amending the San Joaquin Plaza Plan, Community, PC-19, located at 850 and 856 San Clemente Drive. Ordinance number 2016-24, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving Development Agreement Number DA 2016-001 for the 100-unit Museum House Multifamily Residential Project located at 850 San Clemente Drive. Motion fails, 3, 4.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose a new motion that would be the same as the motion we just voted on without your designation of where the money gets spent. I still think it's wrong for this council to tell the next council how to spend their money. We need a second?
I'll second it.
Would you consider an amendment to, with the preferences expressed for those projects?
As long as there's enough wiggle room in there that a future council does not have to comply with any of the provisions.
Okay. But it will be stated as those were preferred expressed?
Yes. Okay, so let me restate my motion.
All right.
I move that, the same motion as we had before, but let's add an exception in the spending portion of the development agreement, that a future council can change what those items are without developer approval. Does that comply, Mr. City Attorney, with the intent?
I think, to the extent you say that the preferred use of the funds are as set forth by Council, or by Mayor Dixon, but that the city council, the future city council will have the freedom to, to use the funds for a similar public benefit, I think that that's acceptable.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, yep. Okay, second.
Selich's second is okay.
Or Mr. Selich.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
So again, I will read the ordinance number 2016-23, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, adopting Plan, Community Development Plan, number PC 2015-001, amending the San Joaquin Plaza Plan, Community, PC-19, located at 850 and 856 San Clemente Drive. Ordinance number 2016-24, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving Development Agreement Number DA 2016-001 for the 100-unit Museum House Multifamily Residential Project located at 850 San Clemente Drive. The motion carries 6 to 1 with Councilmember Petros voting no.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, before you close that item, I apologize. I wanted to take a moment to thank the community development staff for the hard work that they put into that item, and to Jennifer, who is subbing for Ley Lining on a really tough day.
Yes.
Just good job, and thank you for all the hard work.
And I second that comment. Thank you, and for this entire project to the staff. It's been a long time. And congratulations to the applicant. All right. Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote of any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right. We will adjourn in memory and honor of Mayor Protam Maldoun's grandmother, who passed away yesterday.
Thank you. Yes, I just would like to adjourn this evening in honor of my grandmother, Constance Griffith Maldoun, who went to be with the Lord at 4:30 this morning.
Today.
I was blessed to be by her side. A mother of four, a grandmother of four. She believed in education, family, and prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.[1722.23]